Good evening, everybody. It's 6:32 on Wednesday, February 14th, 2018. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. We are connecting with Mr. Mosher. And once we do that, we'll begin.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Mosher.
I'm here.
Okay. I'm going to just break a little bit of tradition here tonight for about a minute or two.
Okay.
And I ask that board and those present tonight just stand up for a minute for a moment of silence in tribute to those folks down in Florida. I think every school is a sister, brother school. So I'd just like to just give them a minute of consideration, please. Six years ago. With that, I'll declare the meeting open tonight and ask Mr. Guarino to please call the roll.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Hohensie?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Dr. Mosley?
Yep.
Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Donovan.
Yep.
Yep. We also have with us other attendees, Dave Rossio, Sean Smith, Marian Dustin, Amanda Bastoni. And if I left anybody out, could you please let me know? I think that's it. We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Did you mention that Mr. Smith was here? I didn't catch that.
Yes.
As an honored guest, we have him on the agenda tonight, I saw him. Boy, he is shrinking. I haven't seen him in a while. Okay. Just for the edification of the board and our guests tonight, Mr. Donovan just handed me the official. Did everybody receive this? Ms. Van Twyver?
I left it in my other bag. Could I get a borrow copy and return it to you? Do you have one?
Want to use mine? We just received this, is what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
What are you missing?
That.
He just gave it out. Is there an additional copy?
That's just the...
I was given one today, and I left it in my other bag, and I'm sorry.
I have one here.
Oh, you received it earlier?
I have one here.
Okay.
I'll give it back after the meeting. I promise I won't write in it. Thanks.
You can write on it. Keep it. We'll get you.
Okay.
That's the one I think you don't have.
Okay, I just want to confirm the order of speakers so everybody can kind of plan around that. First will be transportation, CTE, plant operations, curriculum. And Mr. Donovan, if I may ask you a question, the curriculum discussion will include discussion about remedial?
I believe so, yes. Yes.
Okay, terrific. With that, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Dave Rossio, Transportation Director.
Rossio, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for the level of documentation that you provided us. It's way more helpful than last year. I think it's been refined quite a bit, so thank you for that. Please go ahead.
So I just put together a little presentation to show you what we do in the department here and how we run the buses in the city. Just talk a little bit about the budget and the busing tiers and the vendors we use. We currently run 54 education, regular education buses in the city, 34 specialized transportation buses, transport 8,000 students daily, which translates to over a million rides per year if you combine the afternoon and the morning. My two budget lines are special ed and regular ed, and there's a four and a half percent increase in next year's contract. Where we go, within the city of Nashua, we do the 17 Nashua School District schools, the Brentwood program in Merrimack, Clayaway School, four Catholic schools in the city, and two charter schools in the city. Also get transportation. Who do we transport? Transport students that live more than one mile from elementary school or more than two miles from a middle school or high school. Transport students who are in transition or require transportation to their home school or who have transportation requirement written into their IEP. Additional transportation provided besides home-to-school, high school shuttles, late buses, vocational ed buses, summer school buses for ELL, special ed, summer Sizzler, Kickstart, and Excel. Three terms you'll hear a lot in transportation, route, run, tear. A route is typically made up of three runs, a high school run, a middle school run, and an elementary run. A run is one trip to school for a group of students. A tear is all the buses running at a particular time. So all the high school buses running at once would be considered our first tear. And this is the bell schedule that we use. You see everything in green at the top is our first tear. The middle tier is in red. The blue is the third tear. And we actually, in the afternoon, squeeze in a fourth tear with the charter schools. Out-of-district transportation. Currently, we have 52 students going to various schools here, Light Health, Belli Collaborative, Creston, MacDuin, Learning Prep, Parker, Longview, and Jermaine Lawrence. Those are the students that are living in Nashua that we're sending out. We also bring in children that may be in foster care in another city that are coming back to Nashua for their education. In-district vendor is first student. Next year will be the last year of the contract with them, so next fall we'll start the process of negotiating or putting it out to bid. Durham Transportation, Carrying Hands, and North Reading Transportation are commonly used vendors for students going outside the district. One of the challenges we have as long as many districts in the country is there's a national school bus driver shortage. According to School Bus Fleet magazine, there's a shortage of school bus drivers, which 22% of private bus contractors call severe. 5% of school bus contractors are desperate to find drivers, the survey found. Bus ticket sales, we do sell tickets only for the high school level. They're $65 for a full-year pass, $32.50 for a half-year pass. Students eligible for free and reduced lunch receive a free or reduced pass. We currently have 2,173 high school tickets sold. Challenges in transportation, as mentioned before, the driver shortage. District-wide programs by nature are a challenge just because the location and the distance we're traveling to get some of these schools. Bell times are essentially set up to transport your neighborhood schools on the regular ed buses, and the bus runs are fairly short. With the special ed runs, you could have a student living by Main Dunstable that has to go to a particular principal up by Charlotte Ave. So just in general, we could have some routing challenges there. Charter schools that we transport, it's difficult to fit them into our tiers. Their school day is not the same as the Nashville Public School day, so they may ride a second tier in the morning and a third tier in the afternoon. And transitional students, they can be challenging. Many of them consistently move rapidly and just trying to keep up with them and get them back on the bus soon as we can to not interrupt their schooling. That's it.
Before I call in Ms. Hohensie. Mr. Rossio, I have a question. Are you going to review this spreadsheet with us?
Sure.
What would you like us to know that's on here? No, that was received yesterday. So if you're looking, this was in the packet that we received yesterday, was Ms. Van Twyver's question. It's a long, wide sheet of paper tonight. Right corner is folded, so probably find it that way. Okay, please, go ahead.
Basically, it accounts for our contract change. We've not, next year, we're not asking for any additional assets to be put on the road.
Okay, so for this year, we're really replicating last year's number? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And it's the next budget year, which is...
For next year's budget, we're not asking for any more buses to be put on the road.
But it's the year after that would reflect whatever the new contract is that would be negotiated in the fall?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So you're flat for this year?
Yes.
Good news. Okay. Anything here? Any board members have a question about this while we have Mr. Rossio? Okay. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the bus passes for the high school?
Yes.
We charge the public schools. Do we charge the charter schools?
We do. We do. If the students are at the high school grade level.
Right.
Yeah.
And the same rate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I have some. Well, it's a little confusing to me then, because here on 3AII, it says that you, let me see. The local school board may furnish transportation to kindergarten people...
Excuse me, Ms. Timmons, could you please get closer to your microphone?
In 3AII, it says the paragraphs that says the local school board may furnish transportation to kindergarten pupils and pupils in grades above the eighth or to any pupils residing in less than two miles, okay? But then on the next page, it says... So I'm, just clarify something for me. So anyone on the eighth grade, get transportation free. And then 12th, eighth to ninth to 12th?
Ninth to 12th.
Get, they have to pay the tuition. But on the second page, it doesn't, it says they, let me see, to include the 12th, okay. Pupils attending approved private schools up to including the 12th grade so shall be entitled to same transportation privileges.
Correct.
So are you saying that, okay, why isn't it saying the same thing on A, 3AII, but yet it's a little different on B, AII?
What it's saying, and the way I interpret this, is pupils in the private schools and charter schools, we have to offer them the same thing we offer the public schools in the district.
Up to the 12th grade?
Yep.
But on the first page, it says, in grades above the eighth or to any pupils residing less than two miles.
So we don't offer... Yeah. So essentially, it's what it's saying is, anything that's offered here to the public schools, we have to mirror to the Catholic schools and the charter schools. So we use the same distance if they can walk?
See, like, the verbiage would be the same then?
What would be the same?
Their verbiage would be the same, their language would be the same.
Mr. Donovan want to jump in?
Yeah, I think the confusion...
Excuse me, would Mr. Donovan like to answer?
Yeah, the confusion here is, the first page, the 3AII, that's speaking to how far away from school.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so that's really what that's speaking to. The second one is speaking more to, you have to give the private schools the same privilege you give to the public. So it's speaking to two different things.
I'm not reading two different things. Maybe I'm just a little dense there. But the verbiage seemed to be, should say the same thing if that's the case.
Well, the first one's saying that the school district shall furnish transportation to all pupils in grades one through eight who live more than two miles from the school they are assigned.
Yes.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the second one's saying, if it's a private school, you have to provide them transportation also. So it's saying...
Right, here's the thing, it says including the 12th grade. So why didn't it just say including the 12th grade in this one? That's, the verbiage is not the same.
May I just offer an observation? Federal government regulations. I think, Ms. Timmons, I think your point is very well made, very well taken. I think you're giving the situation, applying reasonable logic, and expecting our federal government to communicate the way you think rationally. So I...
That was polite.
Well, I'm trying to, I agree with Ms. Timmons. It would be nice if the language was the same, but once you see a title, whatever, it screams federal government, and consistency and clarity sometimes go out the window. Did you have another point, Ms. Timmons?
No, I understand that. I'm just, my question is, the language isn't the same, that's all, if that's the case. But it's okay. I understand what they're saying. I just want to know why the language was different.
And I was trying to support and acknowledge, and I thought it was the federal government is probably to blame, because they write this stuff.
State.
State?
This is a state.
Thank you.
This is a state.
Okay. Well, then, maybe we can get it changed. Any board member, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I heard Mrs. Hohensie ask about charging charter school students at the high school level. Do we also do that with private school students at the high school level?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I have a couple of, just quick questions or comments. I'd like to see, and I think we can do this, a little bit more help for parents to have some feedback to the bus company that provides a service, so they can go to their website and get some feedback as to the type of service that they're getting for their students, right to the, go right to the bus companies, because not all customers are happy. Some are, you know, and there's some that aren't, and I think we can do that. And the other comment I have is regarding transportation, different types of transportation. Do we support at our schools bicycle parking and encourage different types of transportation besides buses or driving? I believe we got a grant several years ago for some of those schools, and they got in some bike racks put in, I believe. And there were some routes from neighborhoods that were established, I believe, several years ago. I think that was done at the school level, though, in a sense. I was not involved in that. I think a couple of the schools got a grant for that. You know, I just wanted to put that out there so that principals and people think about getting to and from school, not just by bus or by car, but by other means. And it's great for kids to walk and bicycle when they have the opportunity. There's a lot of dangers, and there's a lot of drawbacks, too. But I'd like to see more of that, you know, at our schools. Thank you.
Any other, excuse me. Any other, Mrs. Oden?
No, thank you. I just want to make it clear to the people that don't have these charts, even though we're not increasing the number of buses, the cost of transportation because of the contract is going up over $400,000.
Yes.
So just for those people that don't have the sheets in front of us, we're not, we're not going to have more buses, but our price is going up because of the contract.
True. Just to be accurate, the contract cost is $265. The other $190 is an increase Title I used to pay for those buses, and now they're in their operating budget. So just to clarify that.
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. Any other board members have a question? Seeing none, I do have my...
I have questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher. Please go ahead.
But comment, and somebody who has had to deal often with the federal regulations, everything that is in the handbook on the operation of trains and engineers and conductors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are all governed by the federal regulations. And sometimes, when you're dealing with it on a local level like we do, the regulations can be oftentimes very off-putting and pretty confusing, to say the least. And now the regulations governing the drivers, the buses, and the accommodations, et cetera, et cetera, are all very, very confusing. And the government can be very confusing. That's why we spend $400 for a dollar and a half screwdriver. So, you know, just keep it in mind, anything that's regulated by the government, you've got to look at it twice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other board members? Okay. So I have a question on your slide where you speak to out-of-district transportation?
Yes.
If you could just put that up again, please.
I'm sorry. Who's coughing? Quick down.
Thank you. So I'm curious, given the drive, these are, this is transporting kids on a daily basis to these specific schools where they get their special ed instruction. So my question is, and obviously, they're all over the place. So my concern, and I'm sure it's addressed through the special ed IEPs and things, but it's my understanding that students have to have a certain amount of time in the classroom to complete an instructional year. I don't know what else to call it. So I'm concerned that when these students are transported so much, does that have an impact on their criteria for graduation or credits or anything like that?
I think that's a question better asked for special ed. They assign the kids to these schools, and then ask me to set up the transportation.
Sorry to put you on the spot for that one.
I can address that.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Mosley.
Couple things. When a student is outside place, that means it's likely that they're going to spend more time on the bus, so we adjust their bus pickup and departure accordingly. So for instance, if a student is traveling to Arlington, which is a pretty highly congested area, to Jermaine Lawrence, which is a predominantly all-girl special education school, that can be probably be, probably about an hour and a half. So that's quite a long time on a bus, but at the same time, it's the appropriate placement. So for instance, if it's an hour and a half and school starts at 8:00, they'll be picked up at 6:30 and dropped off there at Jermaine Lawrence at 8:00. In terms of when the day ends, it really doesn't matter when time the day ends, the day ends when it ends, but, you know, certainly it's likely that that student will get, will be dropped off an hour and a half after school ends. So it's pretty standard, depending on the location of the school and certainly the time, the start time of a school and the end of the day for the school. You know, setting up transportation isn't necessarily as easy as calling a couple buses. There are kids that have specialized situations where actually they don't even want to ride a special education bus. They actually prefer another source of transportation because they don't want to be stigmatized in terms of riding a special education bus. So Dave and his team have to be very creative in finding the right fit for transportation. And also, too, because, in this case, I want to just use Jermaine Lawrence, that's a long ride, and many people don't want to take an hour and a half ride into Arlington, which means you have to go through Cambridge, which sometimes means you have to go through Belmont, that's Route Two, and that's Lexington, and that can be a pretty congested ride. I can say it's an hour and a half, but on a good day, it could be a two-hour ride. So you, it certainly, it's not the most ideal, but when we're looking at placement for special education students, we look at what's the best fit for their IEP in the least restrictive environment.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I have one other question on the school bus, bus, school bus driver shortage. I'm just curious for myself, and I know it was discussed previously, and I'm not saying I want to go here any way, shape, or form, but I am curious. I'm curious from your experience, for especially a large school district like us, what, in the industry, how many, what's the percentage of school districts that contract out their buses versus the, those that bring it in-house? And I understand that's a totally different animal, but I'm just curious what the split is based upon your experience.
Don't know the exact split. More and more are going out to contract. That's been the trend the last 10, 15 years.
So 60, 70% maybe on the outside, and it's much less bringing it in-house?
Down in, I know that down in certain parts of the country, they do it by county, sort of a county government system, but most places up in the north and Midwest are contracting out, to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you very much. I noticed there were two board members that didn't speak to this. I'll ask directly, Ms. Raymond, did you have a question?
Thank you. I did speak.
Oh, I missed it. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that on my checklist. Ms. Van Twyver? Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, you're welcome. So next up, CTE, I guess Ms. Dustin and...
Are they next?
Ms. Bastoni, who just scooted out the room. So we're moving on to CTE.
Yeah, you can sit here, I'm just...
Let me have that.
While we're waiting for the files to be moved around, thank you. I do have a question for Mr. Donovan, which I didn't ask you earlier, if I may. Is Kathy Wild available for the 28th?
No, she's not. I spoke with her today. She will be on vacation that week.
Okay.
So either I can, I can present it if you'd like.
Terrific. So now I know it's covered. Thank you. And Ms. Van Twyver had asked me a question the other night about sending out the agenda for that evening. I'm just waiting for a second confirmation from the mayor, and then that'll be forthcoming. I don't want you to think I forgot. Ladies, let me know when you're ready. Looks like you're ready.
Can everybody, we need one more chair, just one second. Did everyone get a chair?
So these materials were provided to us yesterday? Thank you.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
I would bring it closer, please.
Okay.
Oh, that is even better idea.
Turning it on, okay. So first, I just want to start by saying thank you. Thank you for having us. We are really excited to be here to share with you about career and technical education in Nashua, and we view this as a wonderful opportunity. And our goal is really to share our budget, but also share about our programs with you. Okay. So who we are. We wanted to take this opportunity to just talk a little bit with you about who we are. So career, and we're going to talk about that on three levels. So career and technical education is a national program, and then it happens at the state level, and then we have a local center here, which actually is a regional center. So I'm going to talk about those three tiers. So first of all, at the national level, career and technical education prepares students for college and career. We provide academic skills, employability skills, and job-specific technical skills. And as you can see on the slide up here, it's important to note that 93% of the students enrolled in CTE programs nationally graduate from high school. So that's, the average is 80%. So students that are enrolled in CTE programs are graduating at a higher rate. Also, over 75% of all CTE graduates stay in two- or four-year post-secondary education programs, and that again is higher than the national average. So CTE happens at the national level. We've just shared... So, CTE happens at the national level, we've just shared a little bit with you, and then it also happens at the state level. Oh, thank you very much. Yay. Okay, so at the state level, um, there are 30 CTE centers across the state, and Nashua has the largest CTE center when we look at number of programs offered. We have 19 unique programs offered here in Nashua. We also have additional elective courses, 30-plus additional elective courses that are offered. So, now you have an understanding of how CTE works nationally, and then at the state level, and then how it works locally. And before I go into the local level, I wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, introduce you to some of the folks who are here tonight from the local level. So, I'm gonna ask them to introduce themselves, and to tell you how they're connected to the Nashua Technology Center.
Hi there, and thank you again for having us this evening. My name is Mary Ann Dustin, and I'm one of the CTE directors. I'm primarily housed at South, although, uh, working in a, a team model, we have oversight over all the programs within the center. And in addition, obviously, North and South students can travel to their programs at the other schools, so it's, um, important for us to have that team approach, because, um, obviously, I welcome North students as, as well as send South students to North. Some of the people that we have with us this evening, uh, we have Chris Noteck, who is one of our head teachers. He is currently teaching tech ed, and he is housed here at North. We have Kathy Trembley, who is an accounting CTE program instructor, and she is also our head teacher at South. We have Jeff Leon, who is one of our instructors at South for the TV broadcasting, um, and video production course, and we have Judy Loftus, who is instructor in our careers in education CTE program as well. And I would like, like to just mention that both Jeff and, um, Judy have been working on behalf of developing, uh, with three other instructors, um, the oversight of the CTE ambassador program, which you'll hear about a little bit, in a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, Mary Ann. Um, and later on, if we have questions, so we'll have a question period at the end, obviously, if you have questions, we can also ask some of our teachers to speak. So, as you can see, the Nashua Technology Center is a team effort, and I think that's really important to remember as we proceed through this presentation. Uh, and the last thing I wanna say is, there's so much more we could tell you about who we are, and the amazing work that is happening in Nashua. So, if you have time on your agenda in the future, we would love to be invited back. We would love to share with you, um, introduce you to more teachers, introduce you to community partners that we work with. They're eager to meet you, they're eager to share their stories, so, um, you know, please have us back. That's what I would like to say. Okay. So, these are the programs that are offered, uh, to Nashua students, um, and I'm not going to go through each one individually. You have in your packet a trifold that explains, uh, more information in detail. You also have information on statistics nationally, at the state level, and then at the local level. The one thing I wanna take a moment to point out to you, if you see the last bullet, um, these are programs that are offered at Alveron High School. So, our students, um, because we're a regional CTE center, they have access to other programs. So, if a program isn't offered in Nashua, such as welding, veterinary science, landscape, turf science, students can still attend those programs. And, um, if, uh, an Alveron student would like to attend one of our programs, they're, um, welcome to do that, and we invite them to come to us. So, I think it's important to remember that's how a regional model works. So, this slide is about, um, the purpose. It gives you a little bit more background. I know some of you are very familiar with CTE, but, um, if this is a chance for us to introduce ourselves, and also reintroduce ourselves, and this is, these items that I'm about to talk about are also things we're really committed to doing. Um, we are, first of all, committed to offering and maintaining high-quality programs. I think it's really important that you understand each of these as we move through the slideshow. We're committed to aligning with the regional labor market. We use data and statistics to do that. We are committed to increasing participation by underrepresented and non-traditional populations. We're committed to cultivating school-to-work options. Those include ELOs, dual enrollment, so enrolling in college while you're in high school, earning college credit, as well as apprenticeships. Um, and we're finally committed to developing pathways for success, and this includes vertically aligning with middle schools. We've been doing a lot of work recently around that, um, and this includes developing our machining programs and our engineering options. So, this sort of gives you some context for our commitments and our purpose. And those are Nashua students you see in the pictures also. So, this slide, I'm not going to go into detail as you view this, but we will have details explained as we move through the program. So, um, this slide just shows you what we need to, what we are asking you for in the budget. Um, and to break this down very clearly, we are asking to reinstate two positions. We're asking for one new position, and then we're asking for a reclassification of a position, as well as to add an additional halftime position. And we will come back to this in more detail. But, before I go into more detail, I want you to know that we have four funding sources that CTE can pull from. So, we have the local budget here, we have the federal, federal budget, which is Perkins, um, we have the capital reserve, and then we have incentive grants. Those are issued to us through the New Hampshire Department of Education, and I think it's really important that we point out that these grants provide additional opportunities to Nashua students, and they are written by our teachers, written by our administrators. They're not guaranteed funding sources, they're funding sources that we work hard to earn, and then to provide opportunities to Nashua students. Okay, so, when we ask for this budget, um, we have some targeted deliverables. These are our goals, and, um, we wanna share them with you. So, marketing and recruitment. It's really important that we address the stigma around CTE. It's not simply vocational education, but today's CTE courses prepare, prepare students for college and career. And we need to make sure that all students, parents, community members, teachers, administrators understand that, and that it's a clear message we're presenting. So, that's sort of that marketing and recruitment piece, and this also ties into that part-time internship coordinator, because as we develop relationships, continue to develop relationships with our community partners, that will be part of the marketing and recruitment deliverable that we're targeting. Developing a thriving machining and manufacturing program, we really are gonna talk about this later on, but we need to get the machines turned on. It's essential that the machines in that room are up and running, and that we are meeting the industry needs. And, um, right now, we have partners in the community who want to support us, so that we can send students right into, um, school-to-work opportunities, so that when they leave high school, if they're interested in going to work right away, they can, right here in Nashua. But we can't do that if the machines aren't turned on. So, that's one of the reasons that we're asking for that, um, machining teacher. We're also asking for a math teacher, so that we can partner the machining and the math together, so that students can earn geometry and algebra credits simultaneously while doing these manufacturing machining work. I mean, that means hands-on, practical math in an applied situation, and I think we can all agree that that is wonderful for students. Um, the, this next slide, I think it's important, um, streamy, I wanna talk about this. So, that's science, technology, reading, engineering, art, math, and innovation. The little I stands for innovation. And we're gonna come back to this, but this was something arrived at through discussions with industry partners, and discussions with, um, other administrators. We realized that we really need to out, offer all students pathways to success, and this is kind of our little acronym for that. Um, the last targeted deliverable we have is to make sure we're aligning our course offerings with industry demands for our region. I think that's essential that we talk about that. Hospitality and manufacturing are the two strongest, um, industries in New Hampshire, and we, uh, it is essential that we prepare students for those careers, to our local economy. So, we've shared who we are, we've shared, um, our purpose and our commitments, we've shared, uh, a little bit about the budget that we need, we've shared some of our targeted deliverables, and before I tell you about the vision that we have for the future of CTE, I want to take a moment and share some of our accomplishments. Um, you know that I recently started my position in, um, at the Nashua Technology Center, but since coming on board, I want to tell you, I have been amazed by the work that is happening here. And, um, Mr. Kaufman calls it the, um, hidden secret, right? The hidden secret, the gem of, um, Nashua, and I think he is completely accurate. Um, CTE is accomplishing amazing things, and so we just wanna highlight a few of those. The, I mean, we created this presentation before the article came out, but, um, there was just recently the, um, piece of paper that we passed out. Um, our TV and video production CTE program received national recognition. Um, what that means is that state CTE directors across the country vote to decide which programs, um, truly represent CTE at the highest level, and we were selected to receive that honor. The teacher will be flown to Washington DC, no cost to the district, and, um, he'll receive that honor in front of, in front of all those, his peers, um, as well as other CTE directors. So, yes, that's a win. Um, marketing CTE programs, right now, students from Nashua North and Nashua South are competing in Manchester, um, at the state, oh, state and national level, right, Mary Ann? Yeah, state and national level, um, and we have won numerous state and national awards in marketing. Our mark, our, um, student stores are gold standard rated, um, and I just think it's exciting that the students could be washing, watching us on TV right now as they compete, and we discuss their wins. So, I just think we should be celebrating this. Um, the ambassador program that Mary Ann spoke to is, um, being considered as a model for the state, and that was born from teachers. So, teachers that you see sitting here came up with this idea, and they developed it, uh, it wasn't something we put on them, and then it's a peer-to-peer marketing tool. So, students go up and they talk about the classes to their peers, and that's really what sells the programs, and that came from teachers. Um, the fourth bullet you see here, the Jean Dart Credit Union, originally, I told you that we're committed to school-to-work partnerships, apprenticeships, dual enrollment. Um, this is just an example of that commitment. So, within Nashua South, we have, um, this, the credit union, which teaches our students business skills, banking skills, and then our students can actually work in the credit union at their school and earn credit while they're doing that. And then the last, um, bullet that you see there is, we're working very hard, as I discussed, to create these pathways for students, and we're making sure, we've had numerous PD, we have another PD training coming up, professional development, sorry, um, training coming up on Monday, where we're going to work with the middle school teachers. So, we're partnering with the middle schools to make sure that students have access to these pathways. All students have access. And, um, right now, we're really focused on, um, this engineering pathway, uh, Vex Robotics. We have, if you refer back to your slide, um, one of the teachers who's here wrote a grant and received funding to start a Vex Robotics Club, which is here in Nashua. We have Marine Robotics, which is, um, an outstanding program here in Nashua, and then we are, um, piloting a drone program, hoping that not this year, but next year, it will be a full course. Um, and so if you look at this, what's exciting is we see land, air, and sea, right? So, we are, um, hoping that we can really teach students about, um, STEAM, so science, technology, engineering, art, and math, on the land, at sea, and in the air. And I just wanna say that I feel really proud, and I think you should feel proud of this. Like, this is a major win for Nashua. This is, the Nashua Technology Center is an amazing place, and it is doing amazing things, and I just would take a moment to encourage you to feel proud about that. Okay. I hope I didn't miss anything on that side. All right, so, the future. Um, so far, we've shared with you the momentum that we have, we've shared with you that we have industry partners, we've shared with you that we have data, we've shared with you that we have accomplishments and successes, um, and why we're here today is because we can't do it alone, and we need your help to make this happen. So, what do we need your help to do? We need your help to increase awareness. It's missing on the top of that slide, but that's what it means. Um, we need your help to increase awareness, as I discussed. I don't know if you recognize, but this is Mike Rowe from Dirtyist Jobs, and he is a CTE mascot. He speaks about the importance of CTE. He recently testified, um, on a subcommittee before Congress about the importance of CTE. And one of the things he said is, "The flaw in our character is our insistence on separating blue-collar jobs from white-collar jobs, and encouraging one form of education over another." And I really think it's key for this board to partner with us to increase awareness about CTE, because CTE offers a pathway for all students, whether they're going into career or college. We've already talked about that. Um, the last, another thing that we need your help with is, we need you to partner with us to turn the machines on. There is a room of machines that need a teacher, so that we can meet the needs of industry, and I just have included three bullet points here. Manufacturing will continue to be the largest industry in the United States through 2020 and beyond. So, don't read that to say just to 2020, right? It's through 2020. In addition, manufacturers in New Hampshire counts for 11.4% of total output in our state. In 2015, New Hampshire, the average annual compensation in New Hampshire for a manufacturing or machining, um, employee was $75,000. So, this, this is a real job. In New Hampshire, the industry needs employees, and we need to get those machines turned on, so that we can, um, send students, uh, into these jobs. And the last thing is, we need your help to prepare all students for success in life. Um, I included this quote, "80% of jobs that will exist in 2025 don't exist today." And we have to prepare our students and graduates for that world. Um, as we talked about, um, what this means is innovation. We need to be ready to innovate. And I, I have a few more things I wanna say, but I'm hoping that this will work. Hold on one second. Um, it's working. Okay. So, just gonna have this running in the background while I tell you my last, my last items. Okay. So, oh, it's not up there running.
No, it's not.
There is image on my, um, okay, this is...
Is it in a different window?
Maybe. So, just, sorry.
Do you know how to do it, Jeff?
Jeff, come down. Come on, team, let's go.
She's better at it.
Sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was really on a roll. Okay. But I'm gonna get it back, don't worry. Yes. Okay. Here we go. Okay, so here's what I wanna say. So, what does success in life mean, and how can you help us? Success in life means recognizing that STEM jobs in the United States comprise one-fifth of all application, all occupations, and half of those don't require a four-year degree. Helping us means recognizing that according to data from Skills USA, the average age of today's tradesperson is 57 years old. What does that mean? That means that in five to 10 years, they will be retiring. What does that mean? That we will need 10 million new skilled workers in 2020. And yet, as Mike Rowe pointed out when he testified in front of Congress, some Americans still view a career in the trades as a vocational consolation prize. That is not the case. At the Nashua Technology Center, we prepare students for the future, and we do it in innovative ways. We do it by partnering with industry, we do it by supporting teachers, and we do it by working with students, but we cannot do it alone. We need you, the Board of Education, to show that it believes in CTE, and we need you to partner with us. We really need you to partner with the students. That's all I have.
Amanda, does that conclude your presentation?
That concludes my presentation, Mr. Kaufman.
Okay, so, um, let me get the lights, and then what I'd like to do is, uh, pursue some questions on what you've spoken to us about.
That would be terrific.
Put me on the schedule.
Should I keep, should I keep this running? In the background? Okay, yep, I, I paused it.
Board member comments, questions?
Yes, put me on the schedule there, I wanna speak.
I was, let's, Mr. Moser, I saw Ms. Raymond and Ms. Hoensie.
Okay, um, am I free to go ahead now?
Please.
Okay, I, I, I think that the, uh, CTE is one of the most important aspects of a young man or woman's life. It tells them how the, uh, the world works, not just that, uh, you can't get the machine to work unless you throw the switch. And, uh, I think that is very important. I, I'd like to, you know, give a, a short thing about my career. I started in 1962, in, uh, February, that should be, uh, quite a few years ago. But at the time, having, having an engineer for a debt, I, uh, I wound up getting a, uh, a head full of, uh, fluid dynamics, and electronics, and all kinds of things like that, and I also was exposed to, um, what became my career, uh, working for the railroad. Which some may say, they're, "Well, working for the railroad, well, you blow the whistle, you ring the bell." It's not quite the same thing. You know, there's a lot of, uh, mechanical, uh, engineering that's involved, and, uh, electronics, and, uh, I had to take a turn at, uh, New York University, and, uh, growing up and, uh, getting into the, uh, training area, and... area, which meant teaching people about the third rail and overhead wires and what can happen to you when you get 11,000 volts in your little toes there. But I spent a lot of good years on that. And I would recommend that we follow the CTE and use the leverage that you can get from the trades. The trades are very important. I quote from my own experience in being a mechanical engineer, a federal inspector. I'd say that, yeah, it's possible to earn $100,000 a year. And not really bad work. Sometimes a little dirty, but hey, ask Mike Rowe, he'll tell you. I like his program. But at the same time, the experience that one gains by doing the work and seeing how it works, and I always encouraged the students that I had to always do their best, learn as much as possible about what they're doing. And they will move ahead. I did the same thing because I was encouraged by the chief mechanical officer at the Allen Railroad. And I ultimately wound up being superintendent of the shop for B&amp;M Railroad in Billerica. And I had to walk around the shop and there were people that had been doing the same job for years and I could show them an easier way to do it because I had the experience, had the knowledge. But the thing is that they, once they got it, then they carried it forward. And this is the important thing, to get a background in electronics and mechanics and all kinds of things. I took a turn working for Republic Aviation and had a hand in doing a lot of work on the F-105, the Thunder Chief. So I've been around the block once or twice. And I can say that the CTE is probably one of the more important things that you can give into a young man's life, or a young woman's life for that matter, to make a better world, see how things work, and to earn a good living. And none of it, none of it, is what we call lower tier or what was the expression that you used as a, a lower job or something like that. But if you work at it, you get into engineering, you get into electronics, I taught computer electronics at Hester College, oh, yeah, you get up there and do your thing. And there's a lot of other aspects of the mechanical field that is very important in life. It tells you how, what makes a bearing work and how, what is the molecular disposition in a bearing that makes it so slick and makes it so easy to move.
Excuse me, Mr. Mosher, I think what we'll do is ask you to come in and talk to the students about bearings, if you don't mind. But I think if you don't mind, I'd like to just keep us moving forward, if that's okay. Or would you like to finish up your comment?
Yeah, I'd finish it up and just say, "Talk about bearings, you brought something to mind." And that is on a roller bearing, the wedge effect. I'll let it go with that. But thank you for the opportunity, for letting me speak my piece about the CTE and its importance.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Raymond and Ms. Hoensie.
Thank you, thank you. I really enjoyed this presentation. Thank you so much for putting it together. Mrs. Timmons and I toured CTE at South a few weeks ago and I was just blown away at the engagement of the students that I saw in some of the classrooms and just the facilities that you have there. It's amazing. But one thing that I am interested in is you kept saying, "Turn the machines on." So my husband's an engineer. I know that there is a market for machinists, CAD as well, but machinists, everybody needs them all the time. So do we literally have a room full of machines that aren't being used?
Can we talk, or can we answer you? Is that okay?
Yeah.
We literally have a room full of machines that are plugged in and ready to go but aren't being used.
Right. How long have they been sitting there, like gathering dust, not serving any purpose?
Well, I wouldn't say they're just sitting there.
Okay.
What I would say is we haven't had students operating them around the clock, certainly not to the level that we originally purchased and installed them for. We have not had an instructor for two years.
Okay.
In order to keep them in working capacity, I have to complement various business partners who have sent in some of their machinists, as well as our partnership with the Nashville Community College, two professors coming in. And they're sitting there, they're locked and they're logged, locked and tagged. So they're not of concern when they're not being run, obviously. We have gone through, we do have some maintenance that we would need to schedule in order to get things running for the fall. In addition to that, we've been working on a very heavy recruitment outreach. We've run a day event where we had the college professors come in and actually work with about 70 students to come in and come through and see some of the opportunities. And as you mentioned, CAD, the machining and manufacturing room is adjacent to the engineering room, which is directly across from the CAD room. So we really are positioned for that technology triangle and an opportunity to integrate all of that learning. But we do need an instructor. We did not use, we did not have the enrollments that we needed at the time, considering the budget constraints that we were working under. The board at the time and administration did not feel that it was something we could run for two sections of 10 students in each.
Okay.
The lab itself is built for 16 to 18 students, which if you're actually in there when everything is up and running, you'll understand why it is a smaller class than an English class. So it is an expensive program to run. I would let you know that one of the individuals that was going to come tonight was from the Sector Partnership Initiative, which is really working across the state in four different sectors, two of which we're trying to address this evening, which is hospitality and the manufacturing and machining area. And we also have a variety of different business partners that would love to come in here and plead their case as to why we would like to see this position reinstated.
And I just have one more related question. So in the past, you had maybe 20 kids in two classes interested. How many do you need to make it worthwhile to run the sessions? Do we know?
That's an interesting question.
Worthwhile, I guess it's tricky because in the past, the decision has always been made based on enrollment numbers.
Yeah.
The threshold would be 12 in order to run a course.
Okay.
So in some of our CTE program areas. And so I would hope with the 70 students that came through and expressed interest in addition to throughout the CTE Ambassador Program and the opportunity for the students to come in and have a round robin experience, that hopefully we will have two to three sections of year-one students.
Can I also address that, Mary Ann?
Absolutely.
I just want to say, we are working very hard to market that program and we have business partners. But it's kind of a chicken-or-egg situation. If we had the machines turned on, it would be significantly easier to build, to recruit, right? I mean, if the machines are running and students are doing the school-to-work partnerships that Mary Ann has set up, it will sell itself. But without the machines turned on, it's very difficult to recruit for that program. So it's a little bit of a, you know, when you asked to make it, you know, how many do we need, students do we need to make it a viable option? It's kind of like, if we could turn them on, we could get the students. That's sort of where I'm coming from a little bit, you know?
Thank you.
Before Ms. Hoensie and Ms. Van Twyver requested, I just want to weigh in on this quickly. I'm sorry to, my intent wasn't to jump in ahead, but I do want to stay on the topic. So what are your maintenance costs to turn it on?
Well, we don't have the exact amounts, but we do have certain contracts that are in place because when we purchase the machines, we will have to have service technician for our HAAS machines come in. And we made a decision as an advisor, the business representatives and the representatives from the college, we agreed that some of this is not effective to repair now because you'll only have to repair it again, because it will be sitting there and not running every day. So we've put some things on hold. But we have service contracts in place for some items as well.
So I would ask, since we're, this is the Budget Committee and we will be approving money beginning in the next few weeks, could you come up with a number so if we wanted to fund that, it would be there for you when you wanted to spend it?
We could certainly put that together with a phone call to the.
And we understand it's an estimate. I mean, it's not a hard number, that's fine. But I'd rather you have some amount of money in the budget as a placeholder, rather than have to go scramble for it. The other thing I would ask is that before the go-no-go decision is made, please come back to the board and let the board weigh in. Me personally, I think 10 students is, it's seed money in a way. Okay? You know what I'm saying? And I don't want to deny our young people the opportunity to get into this. When I was teaching up in Laconia, the adjacent room was this program at the community college up there. Those young people, they had job offers three and four weeks into the program. And these positions pay 25, 35, and more per hour. Now, I'm just curious to just, I'm sorry, my last question, I'll stop. But Ms. Raymond asked about the, I'm going to just kind of follow up on something she began to pursue. I just want the public to understand the capabilities of these machines. So are these, these are what, five-axis machines? Is that right? Or am I wrong about that?
We have some that are at that capacity. The way the program is structured, again, based on compliance with the state as well as the business and industry partners. Some of the items that we're looking at having the students learn can be done in a smaller piece of equipment. So we have entry-level, let's call them trainers, and then they move up to the bigger machines. And then we go into the three-to-five axis in the HAAS machines. And in addition to that, obviously, a lot of these, these pieces of equipment we've had for quite a while, we've retrofitted them with CNC, computer numeric control, because that is industry standard. But the way that we're going to deliver the curriculum, we would hope that it would basically introduce the students, obviously, there's a lot of math, there's blueprint reading, there's some design, there's computer numeric control, and then actually running a machine and then having the programming involved to have the program then run the machine. So it's got to go through a lot of steps and there's, you know. And we did make a huge presentation within the region about a year, it was last May. And during that time, you know, we had a lot of interested business partners there. And I do know that they're very interested in hosting, as a matter of fact, I'm hoping in two weeks that we'll be actually going to one of the sites with some of these students that were interested that came through the day event, which was run by college professors where the machines were turned on. And now we're going to take them out into industry so they can see the clean environment where this work is being done, to have that.
Let me just say one thing. I'm sure the school district, our CTE directors would be happy to work with someone in the community who would like to consider becoming an instructor on these kind of equipment through the process to get an all-force certification, et cetera, et cetera. So if you're, if you've thought about it and you want to maybe test the waters, they're all saying yes. I don't know where the camera is, but our directors are saying yes, they'll help. So on our side of the wall, we want to help any potential instructors who might be interested. So please reach out, either Ms. Pastoni or Ms. Dustin, District Office, wherever, we want to talk to you. Ms. Hoensie, please.
Thank you. This is very exciting, but I want to ask some numbers because this is budget. Do we have signs for North and South? We were going to have those? And are they in the budget?
We don't have to put, I mean.
They're done.
They're done.
So they're going to go up.
And as soon as the ground isn't frozen, which it looks, it was beautiful out today, they are ready to go.
Good.
Yep.
Okay. The reclassification of a position for $20,000, could you explain that? Yes. And actually, Judy's here this evening, Ms. Loftus, and she's a member of the Advisory Committee as well as an instructor in the program. So over the past five years, the Careers in Ed program, the year one and two have obviously been evolving to meet the needs of changes in education. And one of the areas that we've been putting a lot of time into is the, into the preschool. And specifically, we've had an individual in the past, as well as the position, I'll refer to it as the position as opposed to the individual, where the size and scope of the program, the level of curriculum being addressed, as well as the variety of functions that that preschool director is performing. In your packet, you have a job description that was developed in conjunction with the advisory members over two different meetings to see that, you know, the size and scope and the level of responsibility and deliverables for the position has increased. To that end, it is not a preschool teacher at this time. It is really more of a director's position, expanded to include about three different categories, which some of the larger programs in the area where they offer a preschool might have someone doing more marketing and public relations, as well as administration, as well as teaching. Do you have a page number for that? It's 9N, reclassification position. So we included the minutes, which you'll see where some of the business members did discuss and address this, as well as a sample of the job description as they've evaluated it currently or where it needs to be. So as far as how that's reclassified, haven't had a lot of discussions with Mr. Donovan at this time in regards to that, or Ms. O'Gara. But the reality is we're looking at either a teaching position or reclassifying the director level of the position. So it's an incremental $20,000 that we've put in the budget. Okay, and the hours of this director position would be the same or there's more duties beyond the hours that we're doing now? Or is? I don't, I don't know if it's hours because when you're in a professional classification, I don't, like, I know I'm not an hour person. I'm, it is a position and these are the responsibilities of my. Salaryed position. My role, so that's how I would think. Judy, did I capture it all?
Does she want to say anything, Judy? Well, it's a position. Does she need to speak?
Yes, please, please come forward.
Hi, good evening. I've been an instructor in the program for 24 years, so I've seen this program evolve from what we might have at one point called a daycare position to a position of an early childhood educator. And as many people know, the most important years of learning in an individual's life are really up until the age of eight, that early childhood end of things. So our program has really been responsive to the changes in the philosophy and the understanding of the importance of those years in a child's life. Additionally, we have worked to develop running start credits for students enrolled in our program, so they are receiving college credits for the work that they're doing in the first and second year of the program. When those opportunities present themselves, of course, the level of what is expected of the students needs to match the college expectations. So we've needed to expand the supports and the demands of what students would do within that preschool classroom in order to meet the college requirements as well. So the preschool director plays a very active role in not only working with the young children, we have identified. we have identified children in our preschool, we have typical children in our preschool, the preschool children come from the Nashua community. So, this individual is working with the preschoolers, with their families, marketing the program, as well as the field site supervisor for the high school students in their experience as preschool teachers. So, that individual must understand the rising expectations on the college level. Our competencies on the state level have become more demanding. And as you can imagine, when you're putting a young adult into a workplace environment and asking them to get outside of being a high school student and be a worker and a professional and a teacher, that's a pretty scary situation for a high school sophomore or junior. So, they need someone in that position who they themselves have a level of education and a level of skill in order to support them in that learning experience. So, this preschool position has really evolved over the years to be a position where someone has to come in with a higher level of education and a certain skill set in order to be able to work with three-year-olds at one moment, high school students at another, and then being able to communicate with families and support them when their child is in that environment. And our advisory committee looked at the increase in responsibilities that have occurred over the last few years, and we have members on our advisory committee that were there before I came. So, these people have been involved for a long time. They are directors of childcare centers, they are college professors, they are administrators within the Nashua School District. And when they looked at the level of responsibility that this individual had, and what we need a person to have in order to really support our students and make this experience the top-notch experience that it needs to be, we need to be able to recruit and retain a professional with a bachelor's level education. And the salary is not, is not able to do that at this point in time, or it-
Judy, hasn't that preschool been around fifty years?
Yes, we just had, I think it's fifty years. We count among our alumni many people in the-
Keith Richards, right?
-community, including our principal currently at Nashua South. So, it has been a resource. We have a waiting list every year. It's an affordable preschool experience. The ratios are something that you will never get anywhere else. You know, we have probably one teacher to every two students because we have these young high school students. It's a very exciting place to be, and we want to make sure that we're giving our students everything they deserve, and also compensating somebody in a manner that's appropriate for the job that they're doing. That answers it.
Great job.
Thank you. Ms. Owensie, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. So, I know, I see there's more responsibility, and it makes sense, but just for clarification for the other new board members, there's usually a difference between a teacher's year, it's a hundred and eighty days, versus a director, which is more year-round. Does that coordinate with this change?
I can't say, speak to the number of days that the advisory committee was thinking. Obviously, I still think there's work that we need to iron out. Again, that's why we were trying to look at it, would it be a teacher's position, like a professional educator, like Judy? Or would we look at, within non-affiliated, as a director's level? And in the event that we mirror other directors, what would those responsibilities be during the summer? I mean, we have many items that are delivered during the summer by this individual currently.
Well, that's very helpful. But I think before we finalize the budget, it'd probably be very helpful to the board if we knew which classification or what category we're approving. Not that we're begrudging it, just so that we know what, which way we were going. So, as I looked over the numbers, it looks like going from last year to this year, you, in earlier pages, it's, you're down by about ninety thousand, but you're asking for a hundred and twenty for new employees, so it's a net increase of thirty thousand, which is fairly modest-
Correct.
... given the changes that, that you're asking for. So, I guess, I guess just a little clarification on a few issues would be very helpful.
Thank you. So, I think what we would like to do is meet with Mr. Donovan, Ms. O'Gara, as well as just touch base with those, the advisory members via email to have them clarify what they were thinking in regards to specifically the summer activities, if it's year-round.
Yeah, it just, if you use the title director, it's usually commensurate with our other directors, and they have that year-long. So, we're just trying to make, if it's not, then maybe we should use a different term or a different category, that's all.
Correct, right. So, we, so I think we have at least two take homes that we need to get you some more information and bring back.
So, if I just jump in for a second, we have about, what, two more weeks before we really start doing our line-by-line thing?
Okay, great.
So, and that continues for probably two or three weeks.
Okay.
So, there is a two to four-week window.
Get it before vacation.
But sooner is better.
Yeah, great. So, our goal will be to get it to you before vacation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Owensie, is that it?
I'm done.
Oh, get it to, okay, sorry.
Elizabeth.
Sorry.
I have been looking through this great book called Cool Stuff Made in New Hampshire.
Isn't it wonderful?
It is wonderful, and I'm wondering, is this available to all students in the center, CTE center, and also to the ninth graders that come up, or the eighth, or, because if they look at this, I think they get really turned on, because a lot of cool stuff is in there, particularly the chocolate company. Valentine's Day.
Yes, it is available. As a matter of fact, when it came out, and it was presented last, late last spring, that we could get them delivered in the fall, they were free. You can see by the sponsors on there that there was no cost to the district. And when I asked them for a thousand copies, they delivered. We are using them currently with our sophomores through our economics career exploration. We felt it was a good tool to embed in some of the activities that we're doing in regards to career research and career development. So, that's where we're using it. We have many copies around, but specifically, it's with the teachers who are teaching the economics and working on the career chapter with the sophomores.
I remember hearing or observing the ambassadors, I don't, was that on a student night, college night, or something like that? And I thought that was an excellent idea.
Thank you.
And this might be one time you would use it also.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Mrs. Oden?
Thank you. I really have enjoyed the presentation. The one thing I really hope is that you're able to turn those machines on. When you drive around Nashua and local areas, you see the sign, "Machinist Wanted." It's probably one of the number-one jobs that's posted on billboards and whatever, so I'm really hoping we can, we can entice and encourage students to look at that carefully, because it is something that pays a good salary, that has a future, and at this point, I don't see it being exported to another country at this point. So, I, I hope we can turn those machines on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members have a question? All right, guess it's my turn. I just want to maybe coin a phrase for you. We have white collar, we have blue collar. I think the machining programs and everything we do here should be considered green collar, because we want to produce income for people right out of high school.
Yeah.
So, let me just throw that out there. I know you're a marketing kind of person. So, I was, I was very interested in your observation on the "Who Are We?" slide, when you spoke to, ninety-three percent of our students are graduating as compared to eighty percent of the regular student body. My understanding is that our student body, we have about fifty-two percent that go on to college. So, I know this was a national number. So, what I want to point out is, I believe that of the, our whole student body, if we have fifty-two percent going on to college, I see the market for our CTE program as the remaining forty-eight percent. In other words, we need to produce people that are either going to college, or they're prepared and ready to go into the trades. So, I think somewhere else you said, and it's really hard to jump between, but maybe it was my own calculation, looking at your students per course, per program, per year chart, which you also included, somewhere around ten percent, a little bit less than ten percent of our student body is taking advantage of these courses. So, I see that as a gap of like thirty, thirty-eight, almost forty percent of people who are unaware, uninspired, whatever those words are. So, my real challenge is, this participation rate, really, to measure it with the opportunity, should be thirty-five, forty percent. Just like there's thirty-five percent of our students who engage in athletics, the competitive athletics, I would like to think that we could do that with CTE-type programs. And I understand it's not an overnight by any means, but that's, this participation rate, maybe in the future, when you keep coming back to us, this participation rate is really something that we ought to be aware of. Now, let me see if I have something else for you.
Can I just respond to that?
Please.
Because the, just for clarification, in the program enrollment sheet that you have-
Yep.
-the only information that you have accounted for here are the CTE programs, first of all. And when we look at, if we, let's say we look at 2014 and the total of 1,089, that's based on juniors and seniors. It's not based on ninth through twelfth. So, when we look at that data, we have to have it be relative to the number of juniors during, juniors and seniors of that particular year of 2014, and the number of enrollments that we have. So, that's what that, that data represents.
Perhaps, before you, before you leave us, maybe that's something you can get started on, to begin to position it so it's better understood in the full context of all our students, and like you say, you have juniors and seniors, and they're taking AP this, and they might touch a CTE class, so they're, they are college-bound, but, you know, it might get counted on the college side, because that's where they end up. But yes, they took two or three CTE classes to get there. The engineering person who, who's got to take, these guys are unbelievable, they have to take things apart, they have to put them back together again, they do not exist unless they do that. So, please help us understand them-
Absolutely.
Because it doesn't look as impressive as I'm sure it is.
And I, yeah.
So, I want you to present it in the fullest way possible, because that's all part of the sales job, right?
Terrific, yeah. And I think this is part of the invite to come back, Mr. Kaufman. We would love an opportunity to give you a more detail about the CT program. You know, I could have, we could have, you know, shared with you for all night, all night long-
Taken up for two hours.
Taking up the whole, you know, but it, Marian reined me in a little bit, and I think, you know, but please do have us back, because we would love to introduce you to more community partners and, and tell you more about our programs.
Even better, the students would like to come and share that with you. We've actually worked with the ambassadors on some data from last year's graduating seniors, and we have some pie charts and things that I think are a little more impressive than maybe a report that's generated off of our X2 database, so.
Okay. So, another question I have, for my own application, people, the students, and even, since we are a regional center, and you mentioned Hudson-Alvern having the welding program, the agricultural stuff they do over there, what other communities does our regional center serve?
Are you comfortable with that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We currently have students that come to us from Milford. Milford actually has an applied technology center. They are the act, the other, the third center for the delivery of career and technical education in Region 16. So, in addition to students coming from Milford, we have students from Sohegan, we have Hollis-Brookline, Merrimack, Alvern, occasionally Litchfield, and I think that, I think that's it. And we have been doing outreach with them as well.
Follow-up to that, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, it is. These students who come from such a distance, they have that travel time, how is that included? I mean, are they getting their full hundred and eighty days of education?
They, they are enrolled a hundred and eighty days. We did just recently meet with the superintendents and guidance directors from the sending schools, we'll call them. One of the areas of concern and greatest challenge, obviously, snow days would be one. Our calendars don't completely align. When we have a professional development day, they may be having school, so the students automatically will miss that. We have early release, we have testing. So, our, because we, we function fairly locally, we're not aligned completely within the region, and I know that the administration that was there, and also other participants, we agreed that that was one of our top priorities to begin to look at now, so that we could reduce the number of missed days. Students take the rest of their courses generally back at their home school. We work very hard when we're scheduling. Obviously, our guidance directors are very sensitive about this, that if Milford can only make it for Block One, then we need to offer the class that they're interested in Block One. So, we build a schedule within our CTE programming a little bit differently than some of the other courses offered in the district, to accommodate the students.
So, that extends their day?
I, I don't know as if it always extends their day, because what's happened, for example, in Hollis-Brookline, they decided to do a different start time, and that impacted a lot of the students that were in CTE, some students had to drop out. And that, that's a local decision. It's not that we weren't creating a barrier to access, we were trying to work any way that we could. But when a change like that happens, like in that school district, and it's not making the decision based on the regional flow of events and scheduling, it will impact those students. And usually, unfortunately, you're in a reactive situation at that time, so.
So, then we lose resources, lose money because they fall out?
Well, we wouldn't have the income from the state that reimburses the tuition and transportation for that individual.
Yeah, and Marian was speaking to that. One of the, the exciting things that is happening now is we are having, we're having regional talks for the first time in a little while. We're getting together with all the CTE directors in the region, superintendents, school board members, guidance counselors, and, and twice yearly, we're meeting to try to iron out some of these issues so that students, all students in the region can have access.
Now, that's got to be kind of difficult, I can see.
Yeah. But we are actively, you know, trying to solve that problem.
Sure.
Yeah.
Great presentation, ladies.
Thank you.
So, I'll ask, is it relative to this? Okay.
So, I was just curious about-
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'm curious about who pays for the transportation when either our students go to, say, Alvern, or other students come to us? And fees, do we have to pay a fee for our students to go to Alvern? And do other schools have to pay a fee to us when their kids come to us?
Do you want to respond, or do you want me to?
Well, should we talk about the Perkins Grant and how we're required?
Basically, because the state of New Hampshire decided that the delivery system for career and technical education would be through regional centers, there is funding at the state level that supports the impact of the cost. So, basically, the business office with Mr. Donovan, we have a student rate, and there is a portion that is then calculated at the state for the students that are coming, let's say, from Sohegan to Nashua, let's say that was calculated at two thousand dollars. Then the state, I'm not saying that's the amount, I'm just saying, using that as an example, the state would then reimburse or flow money into the Nashua School District for that student, that student's placement and participation. In addition to that, there is also the transportation. That's the local district who's sending responsibility, but they can also get reimbursement from the state. The reimbursement from the state per student is not a hundred percent, and then the local district, or the sending district, picks up that balance. district, or the sending district, picks up that balance. Is that?
Yeah.
Did you have a follow-up? No, okay. So back to where I was headed, anyway. So on your What We Need slide, you spoke of several positions, you spoke of upgrading or reclassifying that one position with preschool, potentially director, teacher, whatever that turns out to be. So my next question is relative to the internship coordinator. Is this, Mr. Donovan and I had conversations when I first joined the board, so is this the internship coordinator that was previously funded by Title I, that you now want to roll over? I don't want to mention the person's name who had that position, but it was Title I, and I recall that she was coordinating internships around the area.
I think they'd have to answer that question.
Okay. So is this, is this, is this a new, is someone doing it now? Was it previously done on a Title I grant, and now you're picking it up full-time?
Probably about seven or eight years ago, we did have a business and community liaison position, and that was funded through Perkins. The way Perkins works is after.
Perkins, not Title I.
After, after the third year, basically, by putting that in the federal grant, then it becomes, you're basically pledging that you need this to support and expand your programming. Federal dollars can be used that, for that, there are some guidelines as far as how long you can do that, and basically, the district then is responsible to pick up that position.
So this is the extension of, I was wrong about a Title I grant, it was actually a Perkins money, is that how this, the source or the origination of this particular slot?
Historically, again, it, it was a grant-funded position, but it was a business and community liaison, it was not specifically an internship coordinator.
I understand.
So I think that's what you're, you're reflecting on.
Yes.
This would be a new position, we're looking at it part-time, and the way that the language would be directed to this is to support manufacturing and hospitality, both of which will have either an internship or a capstone experience, extended learning opportunity. And it would, it would be a responsibility to develop those sites and all of the Department of Labor compliance that goes with that.
So there's no opportunity for Perkins money to be used in this instance?
Yes. And, and so, on the What We Need page, what we were looking at is, the total that we were looking for is a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. However, the math teacher would be a new position, so we could absorb that for, for a few years in Perkins, and then the internship coordinator would also be able to be utilized in that way.
Initially.
Initially.
But as you say, we're declaring an intent for a longer-term purpose.
Right.
So if we went this way and used the Perkins money to get it, three years or some period of time forward, we would be faced with the same question to go full-time. Is that, am I understanding kind of how things starting to sink in, which is really very scary?
Right, right. And, and the reality is, the internship coordinator, it might be a, a point five, it might not need to be a, a full-time equivalent. So the district would pick up the point five. I think you'd have to see what the demand was, you know, would be as far as the growth and, usually, when developing internships, there's an awful lot of work on the front end in compliance with the Department of Labor. Once you kind of get those forms and procedures in place, it's, it's a different kind of work.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, I might almost be done, I know people will be surprised over that. But I appreciate all the depth of questions that we received tonight, and the information that you provided. I'll just open up the floor to any other board member that might want to jump in here at the end. Anyone? Oh, Ms. Timmons.
Yes, I'm a little curious about how many people of color that you have in the CTE program, and also how many ELL learners as well.
I don't have that right off the top of my head, I would have to go back to the, I would feel more comfortable going back to how this was generated off of X2, because obviously, depending on how a student identifies themselves in the categories, that would drive that data. That said, one of the things that we have noticed, working in our program areas, we do see that there is a, an opportunity for students that are considered non-traditional, if you will, in certain of the career way pathways. So for example, we're working, looking at young women, looking at young women of color, looking at how can we develop professional development around that to encourage, in the recruitment aspect, but also being sensitive to the issues in regards to the students in our programs.
So. So the drone grant that I know many of you are aware of, is, was actually written in, so it's drones, but it's also a, a grant focused on supporting non-traditional learners. And so we have PD on Monday through NAEP, which is the National Association for Partners in Equity. So all of our middle school tech ed teachers, many of our CTE teachers will be receiving training on creating classrooms that are equitable, creating classrooms that are comfortable for all students, where all students feel welcomed, you know, that's, can be as simple as posters with people that look like you on the wall, it can be, it can be marketing materials. So one of the things I think, when I was hired, it was an area of concern for me, it's something that I'm personally passionate about, and it's something that we're really, really, we brought a person from Concord, who is their equity trainer, he's a part-time person who focuses on equity and CTE. We have brought him to Nashua, he's going to be doing some interviewing, some reporting for us, so that we can see how we can market to these students, and also support them in our classrooms better. So it's, it's like on my heart, and it's totally a focus that I have, and Chris is in a master's degree program, and one of his focuses is also on, on equity and non, and supporting non-traditional students, so.
Okay, thank you, that's good to know. I do have one other question.
Yep.
As we were sitting here talking, I did text out to several of the people of color, children of color that goes to South, and not one of them was recruited. And I want to know the process that you use to, to recruit people into this program, because they all said the big no. So what is the process of them getting into a CTE program if they do not have a clear direction straight to college?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'm so sorry that they were not recruited, I want to say that, like, you know, that, or didn't feel that they were recruited, but maybe we should talk about that process, Marian?
Sure.
Okay.
So again, we do have the Student Ambassador Program. I will tell you that I think our student ambassadors are representative of all of the diversity in our district, which we're very excited about. We made that one of our goals in selecting our student ambassadors, who would speak to future CTE participants. We recently just did a presentation at both North and South, it was about a thirty-five, forty-minute presentation, and it was all sophomores sitting in the seats. So I feel we did directly recruit, or I would say, students recruited, student to student, talking about their programs. The second component with that was, the students were asked to pick two CTE programs they wanted to learn more about. We pretty much held them hostage until they signed up and got a ticket, we didn't let them opt out. So again, I feel like we really tried to make sure, you know, it's like, Mom is saying you're going to do this, because I said so.
Well, we did focus on sophomores.
And, and we focused on sophomores, because traditionally, we have students going soph, we recruit the sophomores first, seats for a junior year, year one of a program is first ride or refusal, if you will, to upcoming juniors. Doesn't mean that if there's seats available after that process, that freshmen, upcoming sophomores, aren't allowed into those seats. What I'm hearing you say is, we missed some folks, or they didn't hear our message, and I'm concerned about that?
Right, I do have a sophomore, and I did text him, and he said, no.
Okay.
I was, you know, I just asked one question, he answered straight, no.
Right.
So that's my concern.
Right.
How did he get missed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, unless, he was not in school the day that we did this, and I, we, we had, it was an assembly, all sophomores must come to the auditorium, so I don't know where it's missed. But as part of our research, what we're going to do, one of the questions that the professional will be looking at is, speaking with students, either taking the courses or who didn't access our courses, and find out why they didn't access our courses. Because we need to get our hands around what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, and obviously, where we can improve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons, for that question. So if I may follow up, sort of on the same vein, going forward, as you visit us frequently, as we all hope, can you start including demographic reports for each of the grades? You know, even announcing at a board meeting, that such and such CTE event is going to be held at North or South, so if the parents are watching, or, I don't know that our students are watching this too much, but in the event their parents are, that we could at least help get the word out in an alternative way? I mean, we, we're, we've got skin in this game, we want every student to be able to take advantage, at least, I'll speak for myself. I want, but I think the board will probably agree on this, we want our students to leverage every opportunity we've got. So if we can help in any way, let me say it another way, if I can help in any way, you be sure to reach out to me. Ms. Van Twyver?
Following up on what Mr. Kaufman said, I, I think it's more use of the website with upcoming events area would be very helpful, because sometimes I'm looking for something, I can't find it on, on that big, huge event list that we, you know, for whatever you got, but if you use that, e- either for, you know, school by school, or the front page with, you know, if Stacy Hines can put it up for you, that would really be helpful, and, and I think it would be an easier way of getting the word out. Because sometimes I just can't find what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Like, one of the plays, I think it was the Wizard of Oz, I couldn't find it anywhere on the front school website, or in the events under the, the district web page, you know? So I think that would be a useful thing to do.
I just want to put a plug in, then, because we did have Open House last night at North, we had our CTE ambassadors here, so any parents that were coming to Open House had access to learning about the CTE programs, both at North and South. And.
Sending schools.
And sending schools got invitations as well, and tomorrow night, we're doing it itself. So if any North parents out there missed it, you are welcome to come to South's Open House tomorrow evening. Tell me what time that would be?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
We'll have ambassadors in the Career Center from all CTE programs. They are willing to take you on a tour to the program that perhaps you and your student might be interested in. Any of you here, any of the board members or community members that would like to come in, we'd love to see you. Students will be in action, there will be activities, and.
You can check out the machines.
You could check out the machines, although some of them will not be running, because they're locked and tagged out. So thank you for bringing this up, and it gave us an opportunity, hopefully, to catch any individual, any student, parent, community member, obviously, any of you, anyone in the district to come. And we also did a mailing to every single sophomore family.
The tri-fold that you have in the packet, that one out. Yep.
So I will declare last call for board members on this topic, anybody, Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I want, I want to thank you for, for, for all your hard work, and I think you have a great program. And I do attend the Open Houses at, at South, because my, my kids go to South, and I do recall big CTE banners and pointing my kids in that direction, but they, they didn't go in that direction, but, but, and also, we did get the mailings for, there, there were packets and, and mailings, too. So, so I just want to remind the parents that, you know, to be on the lookout for this, and sometimes the kids, you know, you ask them, what's going on in your school, any of this stuff going on, and they're like, no. You know, you get one-word answers from teenagers, I'm used to it, and, and half the time, they're like, oh, yeah, I remember that, so, but I, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your hard work. Yep.
Again, thanks for the opportunity. All of us say, thank you for the opportunity to present some of our, just amazing things that are going on, as well as some vision for the future. I just, you know, I would just like to publicly thank everyone a great deal, maybe it's not the right forum, I've submitted my letter for retirement, and I just wanted to let you know that, again, it would be great to invite some of our students, our alumni, and our business partners, because I think you'll really see the connect, connectivity and the collaboration that we are so fortunate here in Nashua to have. I'd like to personally thank Dr. Mosley and his leadership staff, as well as all of you and all members of the board, because I feel that there is a renewed level of excellence in education to the students in, in Nashua and the overall community. So I wanted to put that out there.
Well, thank you, Ms. Dustin. I was going to make mention of your exit, but thank you for your service to the district. What I would like to do is close this discussion out, if that's okay. I'd like to take a ten-minute recess, it's eight-twenty, we will resume at eight-thirty. And next up is Mr. Sean Smith with Plant Operations, the man who keeps all our buildings Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, and happy Valentine's Day. My presentation's probably a little more drier than my predecessors' here. I didn't bring my team. I do have my assistant foreman over there for the grounds crew, and he does a bang-up job, he keeps our fields looking good, and fertilized, and cut, and all that good stuff. Actually, I put my fields against any, of any other school district in, in the state. So this is Plant Operations, and.
Given to us tonight.
It's a, it's a clip like this.
Yeah, it's section three.
Non-personal.
Yes.
Non-personal.
Should be number one, at least in my mind, but.
It is number one, Mr. Smith.
So I've been here a little over twenty years now. Very early on, I developed, I came out of a TQM and all that sort of stuff, with the federal government and the Coast Guard. But quickly, I, I decided to develop a mission statement, and it kind of says what we do. And so our mission is to provide clean, safe, secure, and functional learning environments for the students and staff of the school district. We do this by providing excellent custodial support, listening and reacting appropriately to concerns raised by our customers, conducting timely maintenance and repair, administering the safety and security plans, identifying, implementing energy-saving initiatives, and supporting the district's renovation and construction programs. I pretty much stuck to that through the years, very little's changed, I kind of added security at one point, when we put a lot of emphasis in that. But that is our mission, and that's how I try to drive my department's work. Because we, I believe in shooting for the stars, we have my mission statements that are going to provide you with the best plant operations support in the state. That's our goal. That's budget-driven, which is why I'm here. So budget drivers, what, what sorts of things make up why we're doing our work? First, we have city, state, and national building codes, we have to do, meet those. Whenever new fire regulations, life safety sort of issues come up, then we have to deal with it. Oftentimes, it's unfunded mandates of sorts, but we still have to comply. Of course, our schools require periodic accreditation by the state, and a good portion of that has to do with the physical facility, and the fact that we have a work order system, and do maintain our schools. Finally, I know in past strategic plans, there's been a lot of talk about keeping the classrooms clean, safe, and secure, and nurturing learning environment. So we're providing the right light, we're providing the right temperatures, that sort of thing. So my challenges, one of them is the cost of equipment and supplies is rising at a faster rate than the CPI. And talking to my friends in the construction industry, they've seen about a five percent increase in the past year, jumping ahead a little bit, but you'll see, I'm only asking for one-point-two percent. I recognize that all the other departments have their needs as well, and I'm fairly comfortable with saying I can make. comfortable with saying I could make a go of it with that percentage. But I do feel it's pretty much bare bones. We're dealing with an aging plant, physical plant, so Amherst Street dates back to 1892. We've got Mount Pleasant built in the 20s, Elm Street built in the 30s, so it's showing their age. And as they get older, it takes more effort to keep them up to speed. Over the years, we've had a limited deferred maintenance budget, and a number of years ago, I just took a look at that spreadsheet that I had and saw how many projects were related to single schools. Fairgrounds had a list this long, and Charlotte had a list this long. So I changed the approach at that point, and then we just bundled it all together and say, "This is, we need a renovation of the school." So the first three we recently did were Fairgrounds, Ledge, and Charlotte Avenue Elementary Schools. Those were each about $3 million. It was not a comprehensive renovation of those schools, it was more dealing with the mechanical and electrical. So again, trying to improve the learning environment and provide better temperature and lighting. So as we continue, it's really kicking the can down the road, even at $200,000 a year, which we've gotten the last couple of years. I've been putting, asking for $600,000. Even at $600,000, we're still losing ground. So it's, we're going to be continuing to have bonded projects, and that to the community means, you know, an impact on their pocketbook, literally. The last challenge I want to talk about is the custodial workforce reductions. I know cleaning isn't a very sexy thing for most of you. It's a very, it's a very necessary thing, however. Last year, of course, we cut nine positions from the middle of the 2000s. I think I probably hit my peak in people around the middle of that decade, and we've lost 10, 11 people since then. You know, just one at a time, one here, one there. Again, I understand the budget pressures that you and your predecessors have been under. So my funding sources come from various places. School operating budget, obviously, that's why I'm here tonight. Deferred maintenance, I just kind of talked about, and that's really set by the mayor as he puts together the budget. Capital reserves, we have several. So school construction capital reserve, we have over $700,000 left. At one point, that was like $20 million, and it's, has not been a reserve that's been added to since then, just taken away from. In my mind, with that amount of money, we're just talking about actual emergencies that we should address that with. Capital equipment, so the city has a, what they call a SURF account, so capital equipment reserve fund, that funds our vehicles, so my trucks, backhoes, sidewalk plows, vans for the tradesmen. Stello Stadium actually has a reserve fund, it's about $160,000 right now. You'll probably be seeing some initiatives here this spring, we're looking to replace scoreboards, sound systems, that sort of thing, that may impact that balance. So the other, the big funding source I've kind of talked about already is the bonding process. So the way that works is the school district, including the Board of Education, identifies a need to renovate a school or some other project that requires a capital expenditure, and you vote on it, it goes over to the alderman, they then assign it to their Joint Special School Building Committee, which is half Board of Ed people, half alderman. That's how that process works. I imagine we'll, in fact, at the end of my presentation, I talk about Elm Street, that's probably the next big hurdle we all have. And we do get some grants. In fact, we're right in the process, right in the middle of the process now of applying for grants to the state. They have one specifically for safety and security. I think we've gotten, or they've signed off on over $100,000 worth of projects. It's, we only had to put up 20%, and they put up 80%. It's kind of a no-brainer, I already had security projects in the deferred maintenance budget, so I think we're covered there for that 20%. So the budget I'm proposing maintains our facilities at the current levels, it does increase contract services where those costs have gone up, it's really beyond our ability to keep it down. We do work with our vendors and ask them, "Please hold the line," and, you know, some of them do, some of them don't. But keep in mind, they have their increases there that they have to put up with. This budget proposal replaces equipment that's at the end of its service life. In some cases, I have cleaning equipment that's sitting in a corner gathering dust because it's broken, and it's not economical to repair it. And the last thing we're including in this budget is to restore three custodial positions of the nine that were cut, actually, it was this year that we cut them. What I would do with those, as I, having a lot of problems filling in for people that are out, we have a number of people that are out long-term. Of course, everybody has their own accrued time, vacation time, it's an older workforce, they tend to get sicker, they get hurt. So I really, as I think I put another slide here, the critical master isn't there at this point to fill in. We oftentimes, we have a district-wide overtime list, we, sometimes we go through it twice in a day trying to find somebody, and even then, nobody wants to do the work, and then we'll hit the rest of the people in the department and say, "Well, I know you didn't sign up for it, would you mind covering for something?" So those three would be floats, so if there's an outage at any school, any night, they would float to that position and fill in. I feel we've seen a decrease in cleanliness because of our cutbacks. I have seen an increase in customer complaints. Tell a little story, got me in trouble a little bit, not allowed trouble, but one of the principals complained about the cleanliness of high schools, and I said, "Well, thank you very much." And I knew we were constrained, because we've cut back in that school, couldn't find anybody, and I said, "Well, maybe you should let the superintendent know." He didn't like that. He said, "From now on, you gather all the complaints, and we'll go through the chain of command and set them up." So it certainly was a message I took well, and we're doing that, but we're still getting complaints, I guess that's my point. So the operating budget, you'll see your totals, about 1.2% from this current year to next fiscal year. I don't believe that includes the custodial positions being added, Dan? It does, okay. So even with that, it's only 1.2%. Where did the increase come from? So contract services, I've talked about that. One of the choices we made this past year was to go with a multi-year contract with Securdyne, who takes care of our security systems, so the cameras, everything associated with that. The HVAC, so heating, ventilation, air conditioning, if you're not familiar with that term, those contracts have gone up. We also added Sunset Heights to that contract because the warranty ran out this year, basically, one year after the final construction. Electrical supplies, I only went up $2,000. I wanted, originally, I was thinking of going up another $10,000 or $20,000, but what the Securdyne contract did was, instead of me providing those supplies out of my budget, that's part of their budget now, so I just kind of transferred that need. Plumbing supplies, we, again, as the buildings get older, just more demand for things to be replaced. Furniture and fixtures, basically, that's equipment. So the custodial equipment, I've talked about, the equipment gathering dust in your package is a list of which equipment I would buy. And that is admittedly a significant increase, but we do need what we've asked for. And the grounds crew, that went up as well, I'm forgetting what I was asking for that one, but I'll find it here in a second. The difference year over year was a line painting machine. So we have two, two machines that we paint the stripes on the playing fields with, and they're both easily six, seven, eight years old, and one of them is on its last legs. So that's what that is. Everything else was level funded, so all the other supply lines, our contract, not the contract services, but our billings, grounds, maintenance, which includes roofing repairs, glass repairs, and our major repairs, that all stayed about the same. So talking about major repairs, when you talk about deferred maintenance, I'm just going to scoot ahead, that starts at $50,000. So there's no particular region that has to reach to become a capital project, but it's in that same area. But between 5,000 and 50, we consider that a major repair, it's been that way ever since I started working here. So what those projects are, is re-floring to address air quality issues. I've been on a mission of sorts to get rid of all the carpet in the school district since I've got here, in the classrooms especially. I mean, it just is, it's a germ catcher, it's, we don't want it, it's just much cleaner atmosphere with vinyl tile. There are some places where carpet belongs, I mean, this is a good place right here, media centers, I mean, it helps to reduce the noise. So I'm getting there, I'm almost done removing all the carpet from the classrooms, I think Birch Hill and Main Dust will probably be my last two. There may be some other ones out there as well. Repair asphalt concrete services, the city actually, the Department of Public Works actually does a very good job for us, taking care of potholes, we just have to call them up and they take care of them. But this is for other work that they wouldn't necessarily handle, if I need to pave a stretch of road, or, doesn't get us very far, 7,000 won't do very much, but it does help. Upgrade the small-engine exhaust. So at the South High School, one of the CTE programs is teaching the kids about building small engines, and I'm repairing them. Scooters, lawn mowers, anything with a small engine in it. They really, if you ever watch, my window looks right out on the garage bay, they're outside all the time, because they're running small engines and the exhaust they installed when the school's renovated is inadequate. Just, that's why they're outside all the time. Of course, what that does is kind of compromise our security system as well, because the doors open, the overhead doors open. There's always staff there, it's not like somebody can sneak in without being seen, but it does compromise security. And I don't blame them for being outside, even the dead of winter, because, again, the exhaust needs to be improved. Stall of guardrail at Amherst Street Elementary Playground, this past year, we had a car that careened off of Amherst Street and into our playground area, right through the fence. So we took a look at that, we said, "Well, we certainly don't want that to happen while kids are out there, so we're thinking about putting a guardrail there." And that's, that's actually a price, we've already gone out and obtained that. Emergency generator for Dr. Crisp, that generator is, I'm not even sure how old it was, before my time. It's, the school was last renovated in the mid-'90s, so it's at least 20 years old. It runs on oil, there's an oil tank that's in the ground. So I'm looking to replace that generator, take that oil tank out, and switch everything over to natural gas, which virtually the entire school district is on natural gas, it just continues that. There is a little bit of slush in there in case we bring out the oil tank and the ground is contaminated, so that's something I'd count for. The shingle roof at Elm Street Middle School is actually the, is a small shed sort of type structure on the side of the auditorium, that's where a lot of the arts community keeps their stuff. The shingles, if you take a look at them, are in pretty sad shape, it's due. And then the last thing, a water heater at Amherst Street Elementary needs to be replaced, it's on its last legs. That provides the domestic hot water, so all the water that goes to all the bathrooms is what that provides. So that's $101,000, pretty close to what we asked for last year. Again, my backlog, just in these major repairs, is approaching a million dollars. So with that funding source, funding them out, it's going to take 10 years to get there. Those 10 years, we're going to keep on adding things, so it's tough to keep up. What I do do, and you'll see in your packet, I have three or four priorities of projects for major repairs, the only funding priority ones here. The twos and the threes don't get funded, probably never will until they percolate up to the top. I did take a lot of major repair projects and put them in what I call the deferred status, because they're in the schools that I think we should renovate next. So you'll see stuff from Elm Street there, Main D, Birch Hill, probably Mount Pleasant. So the other part of our budget are the utility projections. I would say that we held the line on these numbers this year. We try to forecast somewhat, I take a three-year average of what the past three years have been, to come up with possible usage. Keep in mind that that usage is all, always dependent upon the weather. We went through a very cold stretch here in January, you probably remember, and now we're, nice mild weather, knocking wood. So it's elaborate guesswork, I do some statistical stuff in there, but we're asking for the same amounts as this past year. How about water? That was the same, Dan? Okay. And you'll see the spreadsheet I used to come up with those numbers. Talking about capital request, deferred maintenance, this isn't really part of the operating budget that you have to worry about, but it is something associated with my department that I think we should be keeping our eye on. So these are the numbers that you see here are the ones I submitted to the capital improvement committee with Mr. Donovan last month. They went through this board before they got there, with one exception, the administration building in Brentwood, that came in after, we had already gone through that process, so we kind of hand-carried those to the meeting. As you can see, the Elm Street renovation, you can see the numbers there, expect that's a two-year construction project, the 500,000 is seed money for an architect, administration building, that presumes we're actually buying a property somewhere for the administration people, and we have to go up and renovate it, depending on how it's laid out, and then move Brentwood program to that. That's one scenario, I'm sure you'll debate that one in the future here. Deferred maintenance, I've kind of already talked about, that's just a three-year look. Elm Street, this, I kind of see this as kind of kickoff to make you aware that this is a big elephant in the room, as far as education goes, and for the city as well. We have already hired an architect to conduct a formal assessment of the physical plan at the school, and they already provided their results. Those of you that are new to the board, you haven't seen that before, if you're interested, I can get that to you. That assessment did show a lot of upgraded need, which I already knew, but did show a lot of things that had to be updated, replaced, and updated to meet code requirements of the day. Again, that, the school was built in the 1930s, a lot of the original stuff is still there, some of the original piping, the control system is with pneumatic controls, so you're talking about little pieces of plastic pipe running all over the place, tied to the thermostats, and that's tied to a series of compressors. That's ancient technology, and it's very hard to control the temperature in that particular school. And has no air conditioning, except in a few key spots. So the other study we did was something called educational specifications. So the architect took a look at, is really a separate study. The school took a look at the state standards for education, that might deal with classroom size, it might deal with what sort of spaces are available for teaching, for teachers to have study time, alone time, counseling time, the adequacy of the nurse's office, counseling, they just looked at the entire thing, and compared that to state standards. In Elm Street, there was a lot that was below that standard. The architect provided us some nice colored drawings that show what's, meets and what doesn't. Again, we can make that available for new members of the board. So what we've seen through that process is we're talking at least $65 million to renovate the school, at least. That number does not include the aforementioned educational specifications and the adequacy versus the state standards. So it's very likely more than that.
I just want to, can you speak to building new, I just want to have the same conversation at the same time, having been on finance for two years, you know, this has sunk into my brain, but while you're talking renovation here, can you just plant the seed of what a new cost would be to build a new school in a different location?
Absolutely. In fact, if you look at the bottom...
Going to be the next slide, you're going to do that to me?
Oh, it's right there, the bottom of this slide, actually.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, yeah, that sort of cost, we did ask the architect, what would it cost to build a new school? And the, the number came back actually less than that. So it was like in the 50 million range.
Right. So it's cheaper to potentially build a new school than renovate Elm? And, and I just wanted to get that out there.
Right.
I said potentially.
Potentially, absolutely. I mean, that still has to be decided by a lot of people. That does not include the cost to purchase the property if we have to purchase property.
Burke Street, Burke Street, Burke Street.
Um, yeah.
Sorry. It's there. We bought it. Can we use-
You would probably have to raise that property to the ground and start from scratch.
It's a big piece. Just move us on the other side or something.
So keep in mind, the, the thing with Elm Street, the, the kids have no outside facilities whatsoever. They have to bust. I see them frequently outside my office. The track team comes over. Football teams come over. So it's the one middle school that just doesn't have any outside facilities. There's really-
School programs?
Like sports programs, athletic programs, after school.
It's after school. It's not during the day that they get trans-
It's not during the day that they get transported over-
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make that clear.
Other middle schools, the kids have facilities on the, on the grounds so that the PE classes can go, and they do go out and make use of the, the fields. Elm Street doesn't have it. So if it was my money, I would look at a new, new facility. I've talked about this already, kind of with, with a summary slide before. You already know all of this, Brentwood. We were looking at, uh, did you report on that Monday night, on our findings, a little bit?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Okay. Moving right ahead. And this one, move right ahead too. And, all right. So deferred maintenance. Again, this has already been submitted to the Capital Improvement Committee. These were the projects I submitted. Life extension chiller units. We're kind of in a four-year program to do one chiller unit a year. We've started this year actually with that. Security vegetables at the four elementary schools. 50,000. I, I mentioned before that we have grants that have been approved by the state committee, and they're just waiting for the governor to sign them. This is kind of our seed money and what we, that's our 20% for, for doing this. We actually have an awful lot of other security projects we submitted, but these are four of them. Replace the front playground pavement at Amherst Street. If you go over there and take a look at it, it's all cracked and broken and it's, it's very uneven. So that's the cost to do that. Stella Stadium, install security camera system. This is kind of, goes hand-in-hand with Park Rec's desire. They manage the Stella Stadium for us. It's still a school facility. We're responsible for any capital expenditures. We would like to put some security cameras on it. We've had some incidents in the past where damage has been done to the surface, which is very expensive. They're burning American flag out there, which I took a lot of umbrage at. I think I was in the newspaper with my, voicing my displeasure with that. We would partner with Park and Rec to build that system, and we now have the skateboard park right next to Stella Stadium. So we'd work hand-in-hand with Park and Rec and we're, it's kind of a cost-sharing thing. The actual cost for both systems is probably double that. But it would be merged in with our current security system. Emergency generators at Dr. Crisp and Bicentennial. I've talked about that a little bit more already. Replace unit ventilators at Maine Dunstable. So Maine Dunstable and Birch Hill, two schools I'd like to renovate soon after Elm Street. I think they're next in line. They were last touched in the early 90s. So I think it was two summers ago that this board approved $150,000 to replace unit ventilators and some rooftop units that were serviced the main office spaces. I just want to chip away that a little bit more. Now, if, if you were to tell me that we're going to renovate that school next year, I wouldn't be asking for this. But, uh, so these unit ventilators are very old. I mean, they even predate the last renovation. And the last project I have on here, which probably has a snowball's chance in a hot place, is, because it's $300,000 and it's more than 200,000 I'll probably get, is convert the front wing air handling unit to air conditioning capable at New Surles. So if you're familiar with the, at elementary school, it faces the south. The front wing gets baked. Get a lot of complaints from the staff. I've, I've pretty much done everything we can to make sure the ventilation's working. We've put solar film on the windows. We've replaced the windows that were not functioning. And the only thing left to do there is, is to, I put air conditioning there. It could be dehumidification, which is a step below air conditioning. It's, it's what we've been putting in our elementary schools, at least the last five that we did. Talked about in this next slide, I've talked about already. We kind of kicked the can down the road a little bit when we put in air conditioning units at Mount Pleasant the last couple of years, in all the classrooms on the top floor and the second floor. So I've gotten good feedback from that. I, I think they're happy for right now. There are a lot of spaces in that school we haven't done, you know, the, the office spaces and things like that. But we've, again, I like to use the term, we kicked the can down the road. We won't, shouldn't have to address that again for a while. We did hire architects to do assessments of all three of those schools, so we have budget numbers to go. Though the Maine Dunstable and Birch Hill numbers are kind of old. So I would look, those actual numbers I presented would creep up from what I, I put there. So beyond that, and I may be retired at this point, but the New Surles, Dr. Crisp and Bicentennial will be next in line. Again, if you told me we're going to do New Surles next year, then I wouldn't be asking for the front wing air, air conditioning. But the reality is, we're looking at least 10 years before we get there. If you follow this pattern of, of schools that you're going to renovate. At that point, they will have been at the 30-year mark since they were last touched. This one's a kind of hard one to see. You do have a copy in, in your package. This kind of shows what we presented to the Capital Improvement Committee. You, you can see the bottom right-hand corner. I've got brand-new glasses and I can't even see. But it's $92 million. And that, that's just over the next six years. You know, we, we have backlogs that go beyond that, and we have renovation needs that go beyond that that aren't even on this slide. In fact, the last, yeah, the, the last four or five lines there aren't even on the slide and not in that total of 92 million. So what are we doing to try to, to reduce our plant operations footprint and the district's footprint and open up funding for other programs? So this past year, those that you were on the board were aware that we put out an solicitation to hire a energy services company to do audits on our two high schools. We got through the whole process. We actually picked one. The firm that finished second wasn't happy with our choice. This board met and this corporate counsel recommended we kind of start all over again with a limited solicitation. So actually, last night, finance and operations, I may be spilling the beans, but they indicated we should look at the top eight firms, send them our invitation to bid, and then move forward. So this is my last slide here. Just, again, I've talked a fair amount of the funding challenges in deferred maintenance. If you look at the numbers just for the deferred maintenance, this goes beyond the six years. It would take 40 years just to do what I've already documented needs to be done. In those 40 years, you're going to be adding stuff every year. Things will be breaking every year. So it's, it's just a challenge, once you make aware of it. I'm not complaining. As I said in the last bullet there, the city has actually been very supportive for us. We've done five elementary schools the last seven or eight years. Before that, there was the two high schools. Those were big numbers. That was 142 million between the two high schools. Before that, it was, it was Amherst Street. Just as I arrived, they're doing Fairgrounds Middle School. They just finished Dr. Crisp and Bicentennial. But this isn't a process that just stops. It, it's cyclical. I mean, you have to go back to these schools after 30 years or so and, and replace things because they just break. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Mrs. Oden?
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. I spent many days on the playground at Amherst Street. And I had mentioned to Mr. Conrad how dangerous it was there. It's one of the busiest streets in Nashua. And you would be surprised the number of trucks that go across that street. And there was only a chain-link fence. The curbing's aren't very tall. I don't know if this is standard size. I had no idea that a car went through the chain-link fence. There are kids on the playground for a great part of the day. I see where you have $82,000 for blacktop, $14,000 for guardrails. It, with that money, is there some way you can put up some of those concrete barriers that you see in places? I know I happened to go to the Y up in Merrimack, and they have something that is much sturdier than a guardrail. I know guardrails help, but we have an awful lot of kids on that playground. And when you look around, it's probably the only elementary school that is so close to a busy road.
I, I agree with everything you just said. It's, um, you're talking about Jersey barriers probably. I actually have some out behind. It's what I use to put my bark mulch and my, my clay and all those sorts of things that we use in the grounds crew. But yes, I mean, they're not very attractive-looking. They're functional. They, they will, they will help do that. And if you want, I'll, I'll look at that as an alternative. But maybe we have the kids go out and paint them or something.
I was just going to say something like that.
Do some murals or something.
Are they more effective?
The other thing you could do is put a series of pipe filled with concrete at intervals.
I, I think that's one of the things I've seen.
I don't think that guardrail that I've, that we've costed out even includes the entire playground. It includes the area from basically the end of the baseball field through the other side of the pavement. I don't think it even gets, because they've added to the playground over the last few years and I don't-
It doesn't go to Sargent now?
I don't think it goes all, no, it does not. Chances are the 82 might, if you know me, I like to have a little contingency. We probably have enough money between those two to, to extend that guardrail. Unless we go to Jersey barriers, we can look at that.
Could you look at that? Because I think the safety of those kids and having, having spent so much time there. Matter of fact, walking up Amherst Street, I had my car in for repair and I walked up and I thought, I don't think I'd let my child walk to school coming up Amherst Street. So it, it is, it's dangerous.
Lot of traffic and very fast traffic at times.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. My question is also about safety. Given the events in Florida today, I've heard from a few parents already who are pretty concerned about our open concept schools, especially Maine Dunstable and Birch Hill. I've been in both of them. I know what we have for our Columbine procedures. And basically, that's doors that close, blocking off the wings of open concept classrooms. But most of the classrooms don't have doors and our kids are on lockdown drills, like hiding under the teacher's desk or in like a back corner. And I've, I have parents who are really concerned about, is this really safe? And can those wing doors be closed in a timely manner if someone gets in? So my question is, you have on here creating security vestibules. Does that include those open concept schools? Or is there anything? I, I know we have a problem with like ventilation and we can't block those off, but I'm just wondering if there's any ideas on that.
Yeah, so, so the, the doors to the classroom wings will close automatically.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, that assumes we see the perpetrator in time to hit that button. It is to the classroom wings, the center core of the building, or the library, the gymnasiums. Those would still be open. So it's-
Can I just jump in here for a second? I was so sorry to interrupt, but I know when I came on the board, I had similar questions about security. And one of the things it was asked of me was to defer my questions around security to a non-public session where we can talk more freely about what security measures are in place because the argument made was, we have them, we're in good shape, but we don't need to let the world know what they are. So I, I am on the same page with you. I would like an update and I certainly want, and I'll share with you what I recall. But maybe, Mrs. Oden, for a future board meeting, not a budget meeting, maybe we can ask our security person to present to us in non-public the details that would probably answer our new board members.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. My question was really focused on this security vestibules and whether or not those schools are included. It looks like Ledge, Fairgrounds, Charlestown, and Bicentennial. Is that the DC?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I recall, the vestibule, it's about controlling access to the building to kind of scoot people right into the office. That's largely what those are intended for.
Right. If you go into Fairgrounds for elementary, you can, once you get in the front door, you go straight into the cafeteria. There's nothing to stop you from getting into the school at that point. There's no button to push to bring, you know, doors down or whatever. Maybe I've already said too much in public, but it, it, this project will force people to go into the office. So they just can't run amok inside the school.
Let me just check with Ms. Raymond. Did you have a follow-up or?
Probably not at this time.
Okay, Ms. Timmons.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry. I, I just want to complete the answer to that because we, that's one of the reasons why we put those two schools in our, our queue for deferred maintenance or renovations. Yeah, there's problems with the ventilation and then some of the systems in school are old, but we were aware of the open concept was an issue. And that, that's why they've been pushed up. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Sean. My question about the custodian workforce. My concern is that if we're paying a lot of overtime, how much overtime are we paying versus just hiring custodian workers? Because I, I, as a assistant director for the Department of Employment Security, we paid out more in overtime than we did if we just hired workers. So my question to you is, how much money we are losing versus just rehiring those custodians?
Honestly, I can't give you a good answer to that. Mr. Donovan and I have talked off and on about the overtime use. My sense is it has gone up this year.
Actually, I, through January, we've spent the same on overtime this year that we did last year. Total overtime in the district, so.
So if that's not answering my question, is that can we have a, a person versus overtime? For instance, if the overtime is costing us 30,000, this is hypothetically speaking, $30,000 a year, that would be maybe a part-time custodian or a full-time custodian. So can you give me the ratio versus overtime and a custodian?
Well, I, I can't give you a ratio right now, but what I can tell you is the overtime has been about the same amount of money for the last six or seven years. So what that would suggest is that the number of custodians doesn't affect the overtime as much as you're, I think what you're potentially saying.
So for the last 10 years, we were paying, oh-
Six or seven. The last six or seven years, the overtime has been fairly close.
Regardless of whether we had 10 less custodians?
Yes. Well, yeah, I mean, the nine less this year, like I said, I did the numbers two days ago. The number this year is the same, this is district-wide, but most of the, most of the overtime is related to the custodians and the maintenance people. The number is exactly the same and there's nine less custodians, so.
Which means the schools are dirtier because the work's not getting done. Sorry, I just had to put that in.
I mean, maybe it does, but the point, I think what it says is it doesn't, if you hired three more custodians, would the overtime number change? Not based on the first seven months of this year. Now, I'm not saying that's, would always be the same, but.
But, but Mr. Donovan, I, I agree with everything you just said. You're, you're right. It's just numbers, yes. But I also know I have a budget that I have to work with, and we haven't increased the overtime budget in those seven, six or seven years. With the exception, we've booted up according to the percentage increases that the custodians may have received in the contract. I'm aware of the, the budget I have, and oftentimes, we do not purposely fill in for a custodian that's out because otherwise, we, overtime would be out of, of control. Could we, if we could add three positions, I'm talking about floats, they would be used solely to fill in for people that are out. they would be used solely to fill in for people that are out. So there would be an overtime avoidance in those situations. Whether it's what the ratio is, I don't know that we have that information.
Ms. Timmons, did you have a follow-up?
No, I'm thinking something else. It's just from, I know what I did when I worked for the Department of Employment Security. And I know we decreased the amount of money we spent by hiring more people versus paying overtime. So I just can't see that changing anymore. But that's when I was the assistant director. So if, you know, the numbers are the same, I just can't see it. I have to be shown. Thank you.
Mr. Moser, I want, see if you want to weigh in on anything and then Ms. Holency.
I was just thinking about that. I had the experience when I was in the shop, talking about hiring people. And you can easily say that, oh, well, it only costs so much to hire somebody. But yes, you don't take into consideration the associated costs that that hire presents. And it's easier to think that, oh, it's only twenty-five thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars. Yes, but by the time you get done with the associated cost, you double that amount. So it's not as easy as what you might think.
Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Mr. Moser. But yes, I do understand that health and insurance is all of that, we still came out cheaper. I understand the whole process because that's what I did. Thank you very much.
Ms. Holency, please.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Sean, this is a great budget. I don't know how you kept it so close. But I don't, I don't mean to insult you, but I think it's almost too low. The new custodians are a hundred and five thousand. If they're in this budget, I don't see where you put them. Because your eighteen operating budget and your nineteen operating budget is, if I did my subtraction right, is a difference of a hundred and thirty-four thousand. The custodians are a hundred and five. So you're saying outside the custodians, you only added twenty-nine thousand?
If I can answer that.
Please.
When Sean, it's not in that number, it's in the budget. When Sean asked me, I sort of responded, is it in the budget? In that number that you're looking at, the three custodians aren't in there. Those are the actual staff, so there's a.
Okay, so they're separate, good. Okay, because I wasn't seeing it in that number. That was arithmetic magic. Because you're, it says you have a hundred and thirty-four, the 1.2% increase and you show ninety-six thousand dollars on the next page nine. So that makes sense. It was, the arithmetic wasn't working. Thank you.
Any other board members with a question for Mr. Smith? I think I might just have one myself and it's just a curiosity. In your plant operations budget, where you're speaking to the major repairs between five and fifty thousand dollars and you have your nearly nine-hundred forty thousand backlog, I'm just curious, of the things on this list, and one of them being the guardrail that Mrs. Oden was speaking about, are these things that you, your guys do in-house? Or is it just a mix based upon the particular tasks? Some might be contracted out, some you might do yourself, or maybe the city might help you with the guardrail. I don't know. But I'm just curious if it's in-house or largely contracted.
It's a mix. Actually, the custodian union and I have a sidebar list of things that'd be contracted out. In other words, they agree that this isn't their work. So, I mean, the air quality issues, if that's carpet replacement, we do that in-house. The asphalt, the concrete surface replacement, we do ourselves for the most part. Asphalt, I would ask DPW. Small engine exhaust, I'd probably ask a HVAC company to look at that. Guardrail, we've talked about. Emergency generator, it would be a mixture. Shingled roof, we would, as I recall, that roof is bigger than what our custodian union has indicated they'll take on. So that'd be contracted out. Hot water heater, we do that in-house. So that's the cost of the materials in those cases.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you. I have a question about the flag burned on the Stella Stadium. Did we find out who did that?
No.
No, so there's no way that we could have recouped anything from?
Had we had some cameras on it, we might have been able to catch it.
Ergo, why you want to put them in? Thank you.
Last call for questions to Mr. Smith. Seeing none, thank you, Sean. I'll just say, he's kind of like a miracle worker. You know, being able to fill the plug in the dam where it's leaking and sustaining it to the next leak. So thanks for keeping us afloat.
You're welcome. Always a pleasure.
Okay, thank you, Sean. So our curriculum people, I guess it's Dr. McKinney, he's moving over that direction. I wasn't planning on calling for a break. If anybody wants to, needs to take a break, might be, take them a couple of minutes to get set. Whenever you're ready, Dr. McKinney.
Electronic. Because I can print it off. I don't bring my iPad.
Here's one for next week.
Thank you.
Just do one thing before you start. As you start walking through your packet, could you just point out where you are in your packet so we can stay with you? Or are you going to do the presentation first? Which I think has been the last page of the submissions, but not with yours, so.
Do you want me to do, I'll do the PowerPoint and then I'll go through the attachments in your packet? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, so the PowerPoint is the second, first clipped thing beyond the colored pages. Thank you.
Yep.
For A, thank you.
Howard?
Yes.
My phone is running out of power, so I'm going to shut down.
Okay, thank you. Good night, Bill. We'll speak to you soon. Do we have to? That'll just disconnect, okay. Okay. Thank you. Good night. Dr. McKinney?
So I'm here to present the curriculum budget for FY19. Just to give an overview, the general curriculum services over eleven thousand students from a thousand teachers and covers the general curriculum instruction and assessment and professional development for the teachers across the district. The rationale for building this budget, we're built on these five things to address a curriculum that's aligned with a growth mindset and support levels of challenge and support for all kids, to provide high-quality instruction, to continually assess the level of learning going on across the district. We provide all the high-quality PD for our educators, which includes both teachers, administrators and the paraprofessionals, and continually invest in refined and early childhood and education and intervention. So all kids are ready to succeed when they get to school, not just academically, but socially, emotionally and physically. We look at the whole child. So we'll go through those budget priorities. One thing is to continually invest and refine in early childhood education and interventions. This year, we've been working on full-day kindergarten. I sent a group of teachers and teams from across the district to a full-day kindergarten conference. They'll be meeting again on the in-service day next Monday to share best practices from that conference. There are kindergarten cohort meetings. The group meets on a regular basis. I've attended some of those meetings to hear their concerns and address some of the rollout of full-day kindergarten, which we inherited this year. In those meetings, they shared concerns around equity in terms of materials, supplies, scheduling, which we'll be working to address for next year. Towards the end of this presentation, I'll speak to the need for paraprofessionals to address equity across the district and give all teachers support. We have a team right now of administrators who have put together a screening tool that will be used district-wide. We'll be working with the kindergarten teachers on Monday to go over that tool. It's built on the New Hampshire readiness standards. But those will be an opportunity for the teachers and administrators to come together and put together a schedule. And those results will help us place kids in balanced classes. Use those results for instruction, intervention and enrichment. Right now, this first year, we've had kids, they come in, they register, we put them in a room and the range of skills in that classroom can be all over the place. So this will really help us not only provide balanced classes, but target the needs of our kids coming in. Going forward, we're working to continue with our Blast Off to Kindergarten summer program, which goes in all our title schools. Our Title I preschool will continue. And we're working on finalizing a kind of exciting partnership between the Nashua School District, Twenty-First Century Program and YMCA for the summer. We're at a, I would say sixty percent, close to the finish line. I can't release all the details, but it's a great partnership that brings research, validated programs that reduce summer learning loss, that show gains for kids, have a guaranteed viable curriculum, standards assessments. They have a baseline of results. And I hope to be able to bring that to you, I would say, in about a month's time. It's an exciting opportunity. One of our goals going forward is to provide a curriculum with challenge and support. We've been working to build our ELA curriculum. This past year at the elementary level, we brought in units of study for teaching writing, K to five. This is our first year. We're, our middle school curriculum is Study Sync. We spoke about that at our C and E meeting, grades six through eight. We've had a summer institute for literacy the last two years and we've trained over a hundred teachers. And I'm hoping to have some summer PD in the area of literacy using this budget going forward. For math, we also spoke about expanding our Eureka curriculum, K eight. I'll continue to find the lowest-cost way to produce the consumables needed for the workbooks. They're in the public domain, so we're not buying them from the publisher. But we reproduce them at a more favorable price point, we'll say it that way. But we do have the need to buy some teacher editions at grades six through eight and again, provide some summer PD. So just like if we invest in our teachers and they learn and grow, so will our kids learn and grow. Science, there's been some changes to the state assessment system that align with next-gen science standards. So one of the things we're doing next week on the in-service day is looking at those changes and having grade-level teams put together an action plan for their major this year. And then also, we'll be working with steering committees. Social studies is an area we're working on to build connections with our ELA curriculum and build some common assessments. I believe the more we have in common across the district, the better off we're going to be. And lastly, the curriculum department also supports the areas of the unified arts, art, music and PE. Speaking of instruction, so we provide high-quality instruction with a multi-tiered system of support. I know we've talked about tiers before, but tier one is a high-quality research-based instruction where it meets the needs of eighty percent of the kids. We have ongoing assessment. We use some universal screening tools and we provide growth monitoring to keep track of students' learning and growth and use that information to target interventions. I think an area that we're going to continue working on is tier two and three. There's a need for some more PD. How do we do small group instruction? What are the best intervention tools that teachers can be using for those small groups, both in literacy and in math? Our math content team is outlining that for Eureka and we're starting to build that more consistently for ELA. I know you've heard about the tiers, but I thought a nice little visual would be helpful. So we're talking about tier one, eighty percent of our kids, another fifteen percent here and another five percent that would need intensive intervention. We not only provide these for kids academically, but also behaviorally for their social, emotional growth. We've had a number of conversations around assessment, both here at the board level and at the district level. So we're continuing to assess the learning that goes on across the district. We've reformed our data leadership team. They've done an assessment inventory of all the assessments that are traditionally done across the district. What are they measuring and how, and trying to avoid duplication. I think there's a need to evaluate the collection of those assessments and the data as well as providing an assessment plan to the steering committees for all curriculum areas. We spoke about a curriculum management plan that had expired. So part of that would be, how do we know our curriculum is getting the results that we want? What are the refinements we need to make? Is the curriculum up to date or do we need to buy additional supports? One thing that's happening also on Monday, that's been happening over the past couple of months, the report card committee has been looking at some platforms. There's some powerful learning tools that are out there for teachers that really make standards-based grading actionable for teachers at their grade level that only can assign assignments, grade them, put them in their grade book. They can sort standards, invest in the power standards, know which standards kids are having a challenge with, design their instruction around that. So I think that would be a nice opportunity for teachers that would fit in our budget that hasn't been addressed through the system we're currently using in X two. And going forward, over the last two years that I've been here, steering committee work has been not always consistent, but I do think going forward, that would be a huge opportunity to partner with the teachers. We have some really talented teachers here who are so dedicated to their craft and their content areas. So we have some work to do on ensuring our curriculum aligns with the standards, with our curriculum and instruction, the assessment. We're going to put forth an assessment plan, design some common assessments. I'm a huge believer in professional learning communities. Whenever we can give teachers time and support to meet together, collaborate, the results always are positive. And the other thing that's happening, like I spoke about, were the changes to the assessment system from the state. They have these two free pieces that are there now that are benchmark interim assessments. The teachers, grades two through eight, will be looking at those on Monday, as well as a free feature in iReady, where if I wanted to assess kids in a certain standard of reading nonfiction texts, I could assign them standards mastery. The kids would take six questions and they would tell the teacher, are they at, above or below grade level? Speaking, going back to PD, I still believe that it's the fuel that runs the engine. So the more we learn by doing, so if our teachers learn and do, so will our kids. So there's some need to tie some of the things that we do in the district together that over the past couple of years, due to transitions and a number of other reasons, haven't been done. So our TDEX system, which is our teaching development system, a process for using the data that's in there and provide meaningful professional development for teachers. For example, if there's a way to show that teachers need PD and help and support in classroom management, for example, that we would provide workshops based on that. We provide ongoing support with our peer coaches and our mentor program. We give training to our administrators, which was done two years ago. But I also think there's, hasn't been done in a while and we've had some turnover. So that would be one of the things I'll be looking to do so that we're giving clear. So that would be one of the things I'll be looking to do, so that we're giving clear, concise, consistent feedback to teachers on the teacher rubric, areas of growth, and areas of strength. Within the PD budget, here are some of the other things that we support for bringing in PD and advancing our learning, from memberships to conferences, the summer institutes that we schedule, both for our teachers and administrators, and the early release and in-service days that happen across the district. Our funding sources are these three here, from the operating budget, the Title I budget, and Title II, for preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals. Mainly, Title II supports most of the coaching positions that we have in the district, from the part-time assistant principals who support content areas, to the middle school coaches, technology coach, et cetera. So additional funding for next year is the support for kindergarten of eight paras. This past year, we have forty-one kindergarten classrooms with seventeen kindergarten paras. The ratios vary from school to school, from two teachers to one para, to up to five classrooms to two paras. What we're trying to do is come to a more balanced teacher-power ratio, so they get the help and support. They could be there to help with the assessments that we do, like kindergarten screening, the early literacy sight words, font design panel, and provide additional individual and small group support. So that's the overall budget without speaking to you, the contents of your packet.
Ms. Hoensie had her hand up. I'll start there.
I just have a few questions. On the last page, additional funding, you talked about screening, but I want to know about assessments for kindergarten. Is the iReady in or out of the budget for kindergarten?
Right now, we're not using iReady in kindergarten.
Okay, thank you. Do you know what the anachronisms are on the previous page for the different professional organizations? I think one is the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, the others, something with principals, maybe? And I don't know what the ASCD is.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah, those three.
National Association of Secondary School Principals.
Okay. And then the ASCD?
Association for the supervision, supervision and curriculum development.
Oh, that makes sense, okay.
And the last one, New Hampshire School Administrators Association. Yep, sorry about that.
And then the other thing, on the previous page, the assessments, you talked about a pilot of a competency-based learning system. Is that in the budget? Is that being talked about? Are we doing that for free, or is there a cost associated with that?
I would love to find something that's free. It's within the budget for the curriculum department next year. What these systems do is what we're currently doing in X two, taking the work that we've already done for standard-based grading, but also merging that with an interactive system where, for example, if a teacher wanted to give their end-of-unit Eureka assessment, they could give it through that platform. It would grade it, put it in their gradebook, and the scores would be available for the teacher by ten minutes later.
So you're talking about elementary school?
We're starting, we'll be piling it in certain classrooms across the district next year.
Okay, because I thought they had standard-based. But I mean, I can see how that makes sense to...
It's the same. It's the same thing. We just, at the elementary level, we call it standard-based. The high school, they call it competency-based, but...
Right, it's very similar.
Yep.
And I had one other question. I'm hearing that the high school report cards aren't being mailed out anymore. Did that just happen this year?
They are being made electronically available. And on request, we will mail them home or make them available in print through the portal.
Is that new this year, or did...
It is new this year. The high school did some mailings home, did a blackboard connect, a video for parents on how to access them, and...
I was just hearing feedback on that, so thank you.
Yeah, this is the first time we've heard of that. Ms. Hoensie, or you have anything else?
I'm set for now.
Any other board members? Mrs. Oden?
Oh, thank you. Dr. McKinney, I'm noticing we have forty-one kindergarten classrooms this year, and it's predicted forty-one next year. Are we not looking for at the possibility of more kindergarten classrooms?
We started kindergarten registration, we've been looking at the numbers. Our challenge at the elementary level is we're really tight on space. I asked the principals if we had classrooms. I really only have one classroom that I could make available for kindergarten, but that would be, I'd have to move some, I basically need storage to move materials out of there. The other spaces I have are contingent upon, like moving a preschool classroom to another school, or repurposing space, like behind a stage area to house OT to open up a classroom. So at the elementary level, we're really tight on space, both from kindergarten, but really from preschool, too. So I would ask this board to consider that when we're looking at our space needs assessment going forward.
But kindergarten class, class size is in the contract, right?
It is. I'm sure there are people here in the audience who could tell you the exact number, but we've been keeping it at twenty. That was the, I believe, the expectation of the board from last year, so that's where we've been kind of holding the enrollments to.
Isn't it like ten percent can go higher than twenty? Isn't there some formula that says ten percent of the kindergarten classes? No, is that not there? That was removed? Okay, I'm old.
There's the overage piece, am I correct, in teacher compensation if it exceeds a certain number, but I think we've been staying well below that with twenty to one, basically.
Do we, do you know if we have any kindergarten classrooms at twenty?
Sure.
We do? Okay.
I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but, and there are some that are lower than that.
And there's only one empty classroom in the district that we could use for kindergarten?
That's what I recall. I said one available. I would say up to three, but I'd have to do some creative reorganization. And that's just, you know, looking at kindergarten registration from now into September. The other challenge we've had going forward is that we were averaging like eight to ten kids coming into the district once the school year started per month. So that certainly is a challenge as well. So I believe that slowed down a little bit, but that was probably through January, I would say.
Now, if there's eight to ten coming in, do we have any leaving? Is that, looked at that number?
I don't think that number is as high as the numbers coming in, because the stress I hear and the voices of people who are calling me are more around, we're getting tight on space and spaces for students.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just a clarification.
Ms. Hoensie had a question relative to this, yes?
This, yes.
First, and then yourself.
Thank you. And I appreciate Mrs. Oden bringing this up, because Manchester, when they implemented their full day, they got a surge the first year and then another surge the second. So we were told to expect two surges, because when you have to put your deposit down, and then we voted last year after they had to sign up for their preschool the following year, they, they're delayed a year when they switch over, I mean, because just the way the timing works. I think, and Mr. Markku could tell me if I'm wrong, I think twenty-three is what the contract says. Thank you. So there is...
A thumbs up from Mr. Markku as agreement.
So I think there's some flexibility. I guess my first question is, what are we going to do when we run out of space? Is it going to be a cutoff, a lottery, or we're going to magically find space?
We've done that, this past year, we had to open a classroom when we moved the curriculum office. So we'll be looking at the numbers going forward. The choices would be finding space, or if the board doesn't want to, would change the cap from twenty and go up to the teacher contract of twenty-three, then you're adding capacity that way, so...
That would give us, how many more rooms would that, if we maxed them up?
It would give you more rooms, it would give you more students, so, you know, forty-one times twenty-three.
Oh, so that's about a hundred. Is there any way that you can advertise to parents that there is, next year, we're legally responsible to provide or offer the half-day program? This year, since we're not receiving Keno money, that state's law doesn't go into effect. But once Keno money reimburses the district for full day, we are legally responsible for giving a half-day, and I didn't see it on the registration form. And I don't know if this would alleviate our space problem, but it would alleviate our legality problem.
The last legal conversation I had with council was that in there, it says shall permit a half-day option for parents.
Correct.
It doesn't mean providing a half-day program. So any parent that wants a half-day or would like to exercise that option, we will grant that, and they just need to be directed to our office. When I'm speaking to student services, and I've directed all principals to let me know of anybody who wants that option, and I've yet to hear of anybody at the district level looking to have a half-day kindergarten option, but I'm happy to work with whoever those parents are and permit a half-day option.
Well, thank you. I've heard from parents and...
I would ask that you direct them to our office, so we can work with them.
And I do, and I tell them what the situation is.
You can have them call me directly.
Okay, I will. But I just thought it'd be kinder just to put it on the registration forms, so they don't have to scratch their head and start worrying and get confused. Just thought it would be more upfront. Not that you changed the program, but just that it was an option. You ask on the form, do you have half-day or full-day experience? But there's no option, do you want half-day or full-day? I just thought it would be more transparent and more upfront. But I will be happy to direct them to you, now that I know that you're looking forward to hearing from them.
And that was, just coming here, that was a change of the kindergarten orientation in the packet. It used to be done with Stacy Hines and Carrie Caldwell down in student services. Now my office is doing that, and there were several revisions of the packet. It's not the most exciting thing we do, but there's some things that have to be in there that we have to input into X two. There's the home language survey. So we do, we did go through several renditions, but we can certainly make revisions going forward, because it is a challenging, stressful time. Principals are anxious, parents are anxious, and they want it to go well. So I'll bring that back to our team.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoensie, do you have anything specific to kindergarten?
No, that was all my kindergarten stuff, so...
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
I just want you to clarify what you said about the number of kindergarten students we're adding each month. You said eight to ten. Was that each month of the year?
Eight to ten per month, September to January.
September to January. Thank you.
I haven't checked on that in a while. I'm sorry. I can get back to you.
Well, I mean, that's, that's quite a bit. You're going to fill up another classroom pretty quick, right?
Usually, when I see Carrie coming down the hall, I know there are kids coming our way, yep.
Ms. Van Twyver, did you have something else on kindergarten? I have, I have a question relative to how many, I think the number's around seven-hundred-and-forty this year. Our ADM number for kindergarten was some, our attendance in October was somewhere around seven-hundred-and-forty, or fifty, actually, I think it was seven-fifty.
Seven-fifty it was, yeah.
So if we currently have seven-hundred-and-fifty, and I recall last year when we were discussing kindergarten, we have a max of around eight-hundred, that twenty times forty-one, so it's just over eight-hundred students that we, without going with further larger class sizes. So with this eight to ten, I mean, we really are bumping up against capacity of space.
Yep.
Okay. So if the, okay, so we don't need additional teachers, because we can increase the class size, or at least initially up to that twenty-three. That's the cushion that we have. Is that fair?
I mean, that's what's...
Nobody wants to do that, but...
Exactly. That's what's within the CBA, but I can tell you now that, and I'll speak to this later with some of the other pieces, the, the needs of the young students coming into kindergarten and the way it was implemented this year has been a strain on many of the full-day kindergarten teachers, because without getting a screening tool in place and knowing what you're dealing with when young people come through the door, there have been some challenging classrooms this year. And that, plus the power of support, I think, has been a frustration for them, when I've met with them probably two to three times.
Okay, thank you. Any other members? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I'm still unclear what happens when we hit our capacity. So in, because I know our registrations are pretty high already, people are interested. So what happens when we get to that eight-hundredth kid? Do we just say, I'm sorry, your kid is not going to get kindergarten?
So right now, if you were at a school where they had three kindergarten classrooms, twenty each, and you were the sixty-first student, you would either, you would stay on the waitlist for that school...
Oh, waitlist, okay.
And then be asked to attend another school in the district. And when an, if a seat opened back up in your home school, you could go back there. But, you know, parents have to wrestle with the transition for kids, and sometimes they rather just finish the year and go that. So that has been a remedy for this year. Overall, district-wide, if that were to happen, then I would go across my building and see Dan and say, and Dr. Mosley, we have a concern, we need space, a teacher, and probably some classroom supplies.
But just, if I just speak quickly, too, I wouldn't get too excited about getting up to some really high numbers. If you look, we have seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven first graders, we have eight-hundred-and-nineteen second graders, we have eight-hundred-and-thirteen third graders, so I really wouldn't expect you'd get nine-hundred and something kindergarten kids. We don't know for sure, but I think we're in the ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Raymond, is there anything else?
No, thank you.
Let me just ask Ms. Donovan a quick question. Ms. Donovan, I know in the past, we've received enrollment numbers as part of the budget book. When will we be getting those? Or are they in here and I just didn't see?
Well, they're in my book, but I have a few things you may not have. But this is just the October first numbers, but we'll be, they'll, we'll be getting them in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, because one of the things I wanted to do on the twenty-eighth was to talk about enrollment. So is it possible we could have it for that evening? Okay, terrific, thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
I wanted to ask you about the screening tool for the kindergarten, preschool, kindergarten, whatever it was. How would the results of that affect the classroom makeup? I mean, how, if you're screening the students that's coming in, and they don't have certain skills, how are those skills arranged? How will that affect the classroom?
Typically, so just for context, every year in May, most elementary schools place kids for classes the following year, and they look at a variety of things, from academic to behavioral, to conduct, to so many other things, and try to place kids in balanced classes where they get the most support. So if you were to screen kindergarten students, either at the end of this year, in June, for the kids coming in, or do it in early in August, September, you would be able to know the strengths and weaknesses of all those kids and place them accordingly, so you have balanced classes, but also you have kids in one classroom who may need help in a certain area, and balance that out with kids that have a strength in another area.
So it would be what they used to call leveling? It would not be leveling?
It would, no.
You'd have a mix of strong and weak skills in the same classroom?
Right. But those kindergarten teachers would really get some background information on those students before day one. Right now, they kind of go on cruise control and find things out as they go. Right now, they would get information on how many kids know sounds, letters, numbers, shapes, all of those things.
Well, that's a big plus.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other board members, at least on that side, hasn't spoken yet? No, Ms. Hoensie?
A question about the paras. You've got like a two-to-one ratio. How do you put a half a para in per class, or they, they go to the kindergarten classes that they're needed? You've got forty-one classrooms, so forty-one teachers, and you're asking for up to twenty-five paras. That's not one per class. How do you divvy them up? And will we be going to forty-one? I mean, is this a trajectory? How is this going to operate in the future?
So just to clarify, there are eight paras requested. There are seventeen currently in the kindergarten.
Right, so the total would be twenty-five?
Yes.
What you're asking for?
Yes.
So still twenty-five to forty-one. It's not one in every classroom, it's about a half?
Right. So not all schools have an even number. So not all schools have an even number and even distribution. We have two here, and then schools that have five. So what I'm looking to do is balance out the para assignments per school so that every classroom teacher gets a point para, five para support a day. So half-day support from a para during the school day. So it may be the same para, maybe a different para, but they can count on half-day support.
Okay. So going forward, is this going to be something we add each year until we get 41 paras? Or, I just want to know what the goal is long-term.
Well, ideally, a one-to-one ratio would be great, but I would like to have the opportunity to see how this goes for one year, as well as having the screening tool for teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I know we want to get out of here. I just try and come up with my questions very quickly. I'd like to just find out more information about the high school electronic grading report card only. Is that, that's what I thought I heard you say?
So I would suggest that it's more an elementary piece, not a high school piece. I'm sorry, I put the competency word in there, but it's an elementary.
Okay. So when I hear competency, grading, I think high school.
Elementary standards-based grading platform.
Sorry, folks.
Just for context, that committee has met, and they have a list of areas they want to see addressed through X2. We met with technology, and there are a limited number that X2 can remedy that list of concerns, I would say. And that's why we've gone out, we've looked at five to seven different options, and we're bringing two to the district next Monday to look further. Because the, it's just a challenging interface for teachers to do their progress reports and report cards within X2 right now.
So will the board be briefed on? I guess the curriculum committee will find out more about that.
It's on our docket for Monday, but then when we come to a final piece, yeah, I'll come and give a presentation, and maybe the committee can come as well.
Okay. Well, I'll probably come to curriculum, very interested in that. And I'm curious about, on this assessment slide, when you talked about ensure K-12 vertical alignment among standards, curriculum instruction, and assessment. So what us old-time board members have seen in the past is a tool developed in-house by our data analyst that did this with the iReady and the Eureka math, where they could look at a particular skill, if you would, and determine if the kid, student was proficient based upon the test results. And if they were not, backtrack it, identify the weakness, and the program, the way it was written, would recommend a particular, would identify the standard that it was tied to, curriculum standards, a framework, I'm sorry, I might be using the wrong word here, and then also make recommendations for lessons. They could print, go right to the Eureka book and get to that math page. So we have that in the district. Is that being used? Do we have to go out and acquire something that we already have in-house?
We have that. I don't know if it's being utilized across the district consistently. The feedback that from some teachers and administrators is it was a little too, the interface wasn't what they were looking for. So when I'm speaking to alignment, I'm talking about understanding by design, a backward process of looking at the state standards, how our curriculum is aligned to those state standards, how our instruction is aligned to those state standards, and how our assessments are aligned to those state standards, both across a grade level, fourth grade, district-wide, and then from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade. And that work has to be done before you get into what you're talking about in the assessments. The other part of this, I'm sorry, I took down the slide, is looking at having multiple measures. So if I was looking at a fourth-grade standard for kids to read informational texts, I would want to be able to look at that standard and see student performance, not just from iReady, but also from the new state interim benchmark assessment system, and from a third measure like their grading that's in the gradebook, iReady standards mastery, and most likely some common curriculum items that we make. That's the way that we should be able to look at curriculum and student performance going forward.
Okay. So in the past, the board has invested, I think maybe three, at least two or three years of a, of a data analyst, actually, there were two at one time, working on this whole thing, assessment-related curriculum recommendations, et cetera. Are you suggesting that going forward, once you've done this top-down review, will that tool be expanded? Do you see a future for it?
Which, which tool are you referring to?
I think Kathy calls it maps or gaps, whatever she called it.
Will that tool be expanded? Not at this time. What I envision is a tool or a product that's accessible to everyone, and everyone's available to it. So principals can use it, teachers can use it, and they can use multiple sources of data. So based on the feedback that I've gotten from the report card committee, principals and teachers, that is something they're invested in doing.
Okay. Let me just throw one thing, and I'm going to do a quick check to see if I have anything else. I don't think so. But, you know, coming from a software background and the trends in the industry, and I think I mentioned it to Mr. Donovan when we met prior to meeting this round of budget meetings, is I think the trend is to, to purchase services, you know, software as a service is what they call it, rather than bringing software in-house, putting it on our own machines to run, that essentially it's on the cloud, as they say. So I would make the case that future software purchases that we bring, that we consider, be, offer an option to either bring it in-house in software we run on our machines, or that we can subscribe as a service, so we no longer have to buy hardware. We're paying for a service, it gets upgraded, it's on the cloud, it's usually web-based, everybody does have access. And then we don't have to add, well, it's always on our, it's our network to access it, but it's, it's not hardware we have to buy and a software programmer to maintain it. So I would, personally, I would put that as a minimum criteria, because I will be asking that question. I'm just trying to give you a heads up, because I think it's that important. We need to relieve ourselves of the hardware requirements that we have.
These are...
We get stuck in a loop of having to upgrade hardware every few years. You can't keep up with it. But the company who provides that software, they're buying the hardware, we're not. We're paying for access, or we're paying for space, or whatever. So...
Can I just speak to that?
Please.
All the programs and platforms that we're looking at combine three things. Your student information system, which we're not looking to get rid of, like Aspen.
You are?
We are not a component for assessment and a component for data analysis. So all of those, these platforms have those. We're invested in these two, assessment and data. And they can track longitudinally both our state assessments, and we can go back in time to see how kids perform. But they also have the components, which I think teachers want and need, of quick, efficient reporting, grading, producing report cards, progress reports, that are not, they spend hours basically right now, the way the platform is. It should not take that long. We can reduce that with what the features are that are out there. And I think it's a huge bang for the buck. And I think, I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback from teachers on Monday.
I do have one more thing that I, it's more of a comment, relative to your early childhood education intervention with the emphasis on kindergarten. And this is more of my own concern, and I'm just going to share it with, with the board and the, and the community at large. My concern is, okay, we, if you look at our test scores across the district, we score terribly. We're in the twenties, I believe, in math, and in twenty to thirties, you know, proficiency, depending upon what grade you want to look at, high school, for example, and in the fifties at best in reading and, and writing. And I know NEASC or S, I mean, you could take your pick which test, but they relatively consistency, relative consistent across the various assessment platforms. So here's my concern with the emphasis that we're putting into kindergarten and the staffing recommendation to add all these paras into kindergarten. I don't see, yet, and that's why my question about tonight and remediation still hasn't been answered. So here's my concern. When you talk about this FAP, that, that's going to be our new buzzword, free and public education is what I think it is. It was introduced in one of Ms. Bream's slides. Our transportation director brought it up earlier. I'm concerned that we're not providing the remedial assistance to, I mean, we're declaring we want all this stuff with kindergarten. The board, the one goal we agreed on over the last year and a half or so was that we wanted our kids proficient at third grade. But the thing that I struggle with is that we're not committed to having all our kids proficient at every grade. And I think it's, I think, I'll just say it this way, I think it's wrong that we don't have an adequate emphasis to ensure that kids at every level are reading at grade level. Because once they get past the third grade, if we hadn't fixed it, we either ignore them or, I, I don't have a sense, and that's why I brought up and asked for information about remediation. We have over $3 million. If that thing that you gave us listed all the staff that we had, remedial specialists, et cetera.
But that's...
Excuse me for a second, totaled $3 million. But I don't feel that we have the emphasis. It doesn't display to me, I don't have an assurance, I don't have a comfort level, that the rest of the students, I know, I hear about intervention, oh, with kindergarten, we're going to help with paras, and all this other stuff. Oh, we have intervention we want to do for ELL, those special ed kids, they're all covered, they've got more services than just about everybody. But I don't feel as though, you know, the ELL is about 10% of our student body. The special ed kids, the same 11, 12, 1300 kids. So that's about 10% each. So help me understand where the 80%, how the 80% of people are getting the adequate, necessary remedial assistance they need to be proficient at grade level. That's the gap that I see missing, and I, please address that. I know we all want to get out of here. That's an important question to me. I'm not going to, if we can't answer it now in a couple of minutes, I would probably ask you to come back.
I'm ready to answer it now. I'm just waiting for an opportunity.
I'm sorry. I was, I wanted to make my point, so please go ahead.
The challenge is that the students that are coming in are more and more complicated. They've come from a variety of backgrounds, a variety of needs. You heard the needs from the ELL population, you heard the needs of special education. We deal with the whole child. They're more than a, a number or a test score. For some kids, the best part of their day is within the school building. They go outside to the weekend, and they are exposed to all kinds of things. The system has been through a lot over the last three years. Some of these systemic things that I'm speaking to here need to be addressed. I'm invested in all kids, and I think some of the things that we're doing here, for example, you build a great house from the bottom up, so we need to invest in tier-one instruction, sorry about that. Our Eureka program in math, and building a literacy program in ELA, that's key right now. High-quality, research-based materials. Tier two, when you speak to these $3 million that are invested, $1 million of that is from Title I. That's federal funds designated to support kids at risk. That money is not coming from the local level. That money goes to provide interventions for kids at tier-two who come from challenging backgrounds. I think part of the challenge, if you look at that spreadsheet, is that if you're a principal of a school and you have 500 kids, and say 10% of those kids are in tier-two, and you only have one reading specialist, you can only help 100 kids. And which kids out of the 100 are you going to help? That's apparent in there, that not all schools have the level of help and support to intervene, whether it's ELL or tier-two instruction in reading and math, because they just don't have capacity. So what a lot of the schools do, they invest in K1 and 2, and if you don't get what you need, or you're outside of the capacity of that one person, yeah, it's going to be a challenge, because you're going to fall behind. We need time and support, both within the school day and beyond, to help kids get what they need. I think right now, we're invested in looking at intervention programs here. We have some in reading. We need to outline what those look like in math. And then working with, we've trained special education in what those look like. But some of these things, again, when you've had transitions in administration, teacher and administration turnover, there's not consistency of some of these initiatives. Those all play a part in straining the system. I've had requests from guidance counselors for additional support and social workers because the challenge of kids coming in, they are, they're not ready to learn. They come from backgrounds where they've seen trauma, they're exposed to things that young people shouldn't see and hear, and they're just not at a place. And that, that wears on young people and their development and their brain function. That's a huge challenge. I've also gotten requests for assistant principals, because crises don't happen on the days when they're in the building. It can happen at any moment. And their days are spent helping and intervening on kids in crisis. So leadership stops then, they're, they take the brunt of it. They're not there to help and support. The teachers do their many observations, they're here just for safety and security. And when the kids are in a bad way, it's Groundhog Day, and they do it day in, day out. And they are, put themselves in harm's way to keep their faculty safe until things are remedied. So I think we just have to keep a balanced perspective of both what the whole district has been through, but also the needs of our kids. It's really shifted. We've seen more and more kids come, exposed to trauma, more and more families from the opioid, opioid crisis, anxiety. Ms. Bream spoke about more and more kids with behavior disorders and autism. So I just think we have to keep a balanced perspective of all that. So our investment would be, and it's in one of the other slides, if you want me to go to and speak to the after-school program or what that would look like, but I would hope we could come to a place where we can find additional time and support within the school day, give all schools paras, all teachers additional time to look, plan together, look at the data, come up with dynamic lessons, and intervene. If you look at schools and districts that have made those gains, they've done things like that. I just think we, between the strain of the system, the change in young people coming here, and some necessary resources, we're just a few pieces away from making nice gains.
My observation, or having heard what you just said, is the kids that come to the district with all these historical, part of their, that's what their life has been before they get here, they can enter the district at any age, right? I mean, it's not just young, the, the young ones. It's not just kindergarten for second. They could come in in sixth grade, having come from another country, maybe, you know, and sensitive to all the things that we spoke about. But it gets to the point where, with ELL, we learn, with ELL discussion, we learned that, oh, the kids will have their two class, their two hours a day of ELL, because that's where they, that's what they're required to have. But after that, they'll dump them into a, or put them in a, not a math class or a science or an English class, but an art class or a gym class or something else, and they're not getting the educational piece. So for me, that becomes a systemic problem where we're not responding to the kids in that situation. I see you, Mr. Guarino. We're not responding to the kids in that situation well, because they're not getting the academic piece that they should have. And granted, there may be a language thing, but we have to figure out a way where we can graduate, where those kids can graduate, that we have whatever we need to give them. And it's not just for an immigrant or refugee child, it's every kid who has a learning disability or whatever it might be and doesn't have an IEP. The kids with the IEPs seem, they, they, they have a stacked deck in their favor, and they're 10% of the population. Okay? The ELLs have a focus. Granted, it's insufficient. But the 80% that remains, I am not comfortable, even with what you just said to me, that their needs are fully addressed and covered. And that's what I'm seeking. And I'm not going to elongate the night to drill down anymore, because it is, we're after 10 o'clock. But I, I just know that that, for me, that question is still sitting out there. And if you have a way to provide updates or whatever, I'd appreciate it. I do want to, I'll ask Dr. McKinnity to reply, and then we'll go to Mr. Guarino.
Of that percentage that you're referring to, I think, you know, the, the teachers, we have very talented people here, and when they come together, they produce great things. And I would put the work they do against anyone in the state. But the kids that come and take those assessments may not always be very invested in the outcome. Not all kids want to know that I'm proficient. Not all kids wanna know that I'm proficient on the state assessment, that means not a lot to everyone. So some kids from, depending on their background, or their parents, or where their home is, high expectations. For others, it's just two hours of a test that doesn't mean anything to me, because my needs outside of school are stressing me. So I think the challenge for teachers day in and day out is to motivate kids, provide engaging lessons for them, and make the learning happen, but I think we just have to understand that kids don't come every day fully invested in their learning all of the time, because there, there's some other lingering issues behind there, so.
Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna thank you, Dr. McKinney, for that answer. I thought that was, you know, a very good answer. My takeaway is that there are barriers to learning. All things are not equal for all students, and our schools do not exist in a vacuum. Thing, you know, things affect what happens in our city, what happens in our society affects our kids. And I think what we can do to help our schools, because, as you say, we have, we have wonderful teachers, we have professional educators who do, work hard every day, they're doing a lot of hard work. Education, there's no magic potion, there's no magic fix, magic potion, it's a long, hard journey, that's what education is. It's a long, hard slog, that's what education is. So what we can do, I think what we can do to help, is we need to do a better job, that's us. The Board of Education needs to do a better job to find out what the barriers to learning are, and, and to try to, try to eliminate those barriers, so that, so that our teachers can be, you know, so, so we can be more effective in our schools. And, and again, you know, our schools don't exist in a vacuum, you know, there, there's things that are happening in society that are affecting our school, and, and people have to understand that, so, thank you very much.
Any other comments regarding this tonight?
I would like to request that I have an opportunity to come back to the, speak to the remaining pieces that are in the packet from tonight that weren't covered.
Okay, so would you like to come back? Our next available date, if I'm not mistaken, is March 1st, the first week of March. Or did you have something planned, Mr. Donovan?
No, I'm just wondering, next week, we have two presentations, if there's time, and maybe he could.
Oh, let me take a look.
Wrap it up, then. We just have athletics and transportation, so.
Well, you know, you know better than I what's in there. Do you think there's adequate time to ask Mr. Dr. McKinney to come back?
Yes, I think, I think, I think we could do it, yes.
I'm happy to ask you to come back next week, then. So please to contain, I, I hope you don't mind, but I think we're losing our concentration.
Could I pick up first, from where we left off, going into that meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, wherever you wanna start, we'll resume from.
Thank you.
And so we'll make, just make sure that everybody brings the materials from tonight on the curriculum presentation back with them next week. Mrs. Oden.
I just wanna thank Dr. McKinney for that, that last commentary, because I'm hearing more and more about students coming in that have problems that are much more severe than they've seen in a long time, and with the opioid crisis and, and all the anxiety and depression, I think it's only gonna grow. And I think it will, might be interesting if you ask some of your principals to write down some of the toughest cases they've dealt with, just to educate some of the board members, because I always say, people have no idea what schools are like today. And I, I think getting some real-life stories from principals, you don't have to say what school, they don't have to say what grade, but I think that would give people a little bit of a window to what our educators deal with today. But I thought you did an excellent job, thank you.
Thank you, and if I could just say one thing. Our challenge now is, the schools that are really good at behavior, 'cause they have those programs, they can handle it, the schools that don't need to grow in that area, because those students could walk through the door in any of our schools tomorrow, and they need to be ready to go. Not just with a specialized team, but from the classroom teacher, to the people in the office, anybody who's gonna interact with that kid.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, I, oh.
No roll call.
No roll call, Mr. Motion's not on the phone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Passes 7-0 at 10:18 PM.